Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening.
The first item on our agenda is eighty-one Byram Shore Road. Mr. Haslam?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. For the record, Chip Haslam from Johnson, Haslam and Hoagman for the applicant. I am requesting a continuance of this matter tonight. I had the luxury of having my son be able to attend your briefing session yesterday, and then to speak to staff afterwards. And it's clear to me that the Commission has some concerns about whether we've supplied you with sufficient information so that you can make a determination that the proposal the tennis court lights meets within your regulations. So with that in mind, I'm asking that the Commission continue this matter tonight, and we will attempt to address those concerns and give you more information.
Okay. Does anybody have a problem? Anybody have a problem?
Oh, and I should say too that I did notify Attorney Bristol, who had represented one of the neighbors at the A R C meeting, and I asked them to also let anybody else know, so hopefully nobody's going to appear tonight that we're going to continue.
Anybody from the public have any comment?
Mr. Haslam, are you intending to go to the June thirtieth or the July seventh? How much time do you need?
I think the June thirtieth would be sufficient. I think we can address those concerns and get the expert that you're looking for in by then.
And you think by the Thursday before that Tuesday meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Let me ask a question. Would it not be better to go back since A R C had one of the same comments? And you could catch their first meeting in July? Is it possible that you could then come to us after that?
My sense, particularly because A R C, there was a request for a motion to see if there's any recommendations to the applicant that it may consider, and that motion, nobody was willing to file. So it seems to me that they were completely resistant to the idea.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you recently change golfers?
I did. After twenty-eight years of Ivy Barman Amara, Jane Hoagman has moved to North Carolina, and there was an opportunity that arose.
Jane moved to North Carolina?
She has.
Oh, my word.
And she might be back. We hear she's a little bored. She's not a golfer, but she's in binders. But, so, I'm happy to say I've moved over to Twenty-One.
Are you Jane Hoagman's successor?
Yes, although she's still part of the partnership.
Mr. Haslam, just a thought on your application. We understood that at the A R C there was a lot of, there were neighbors objecting.
There was one neighbor with Chris Bristol. I know others wrote letters, but there's only one neighbor.
So if you have an opportunity to maybe get some support from them, or, you know, to get them comfortable, as well as making sure it meets our regulations, that would go a long way. I'm just suggesting, I just throw it out there, obviously if it meets our regulations, it meets our regulations.
I think that the neighbors, for the most part, are adamant against the idea of lights here, even though there are tennis court lights just down the street. But nonetheless, my client's willing to make some concessions to try to mitigate the impact.
Mr. Haslam?
Yes.
I thought the, sorry, the A R C made a couple of comments about lowering the lights and, you know, getting them better screened by higher planting. I thought there was, it seemed to me, some room for a solution with them.
It's funny, because it's a total contradiction in the staff notes. On the one hand, there says that there were several recommendations made that I don't recall at all, and neither does the landscape architect. And, but it's often hard with A R C, because unlike yourselves, they sometimes have three or four conversations going at the same time.
That never happens with us.
Oh, never.
More so, I should say, with A R C. So I may not have heard it, but there was a set, a call, they went on a move to make recommendations to us, and none was forthcoming. So I was unaware of any of those recommendations.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, we're now, the public hearing, ma'am.
And if I could, Mr.?
Seven fifteen.
Mr. Chair, could I?
We have eight minutes to wait.
Could I ask Mr. Haslam a quick question while we're, so, what you're planning, what you're planning to come back with on the thirtieth, then, if I could just clarify, is a photometric plan?
Correct.
From a lighting engineer, if you will, that clarifies some of those areas that weren't totally clear on the plan, if it was, in fact, a point one at the property line. And if you could, if you could ask them to, I don't know, superimpose, or whatever the right word is, some of that landscaping, so that we can see how the landscaping that is being proposed will mitigate the impact from these lights, I think that would be very useful.
Be happy to, yeah.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Folks, legally, we're bound to go into public hearing at seven fifteen. So we're on a little bit of a pause.
We could tell jokes.
There's a couple of things we could address.
I'd like to move approval of the June second minutes.
That's a good idea.
That's a good thought, okay.
Right second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And would the Commission like to discuss an ex officio member, vote on that for the New Lebanon Building Committee? Would you like to take a motion and a vote on that?
Why don't you review it for a second?
Well, the Planning and Zoning Commission, per the Charter, has afforded an opportunity to have an ex officio member be a part of the building committee that will review plans and go through the process and report back to the Commission on the New Lebanon School once one has actually been, the site has been chosen, and it goes on its way.
Is that titled ex officio or non-voting?
Ex officio.
It's ex officio, but it is a non-voting member of that building committee. But that's, that's the...
These years I've been ex officio.
That's the verbiage in the Charter.
And we had discussed having it be an alternate. I understand Andy and Nancy.
No, please, we haven't discussed that yet.
Oh, okay.
We'll have to select somebody.
Okay. So are we going to select someone, Donald?
Yes.
Okay. Now, are we going to do it now?
I want to discuss it with the parties before we decide, because we have some other things coming up also.
Okay. You wanted to...
For now, leave me as the ex officio, okay?
Okay. A vote doesn't have to be taken just at the moment. There is a meeting on Thursday. We could have a placeholder person until...
Coming in from Shore Road.
Vote goes forward, because since the site hasn't been chosen at this time.
You know, Rich?
I think he just...
You got a letter there from Stoddard. Did you see it?
I believe I have the official clock.
Five minutes to go.
Mr. Chair, could I raise a schedule question with you? We had originally discussed having a next public meeting for the Eastern Greenwich Neighborhood Plan on July ninth, and I would wonder if July twenty-third would be okay? Because there's a lot of, there's a lot of in-depth comments that have come in recently, and I think this would afford us an opportunity to perhaps even meet again internally to discuss some of the body of the text and some of these comments that have come in, and then have the meeting on the twenty-third.
Katie, I'm attending a memorial service for my mother that day.
Okay. Perhaps that, maybe the day before, the Wednesday?
I mean, I'm, this is in Canada.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
There are ten of us going up there.
Right. So we'll discuss the date at a future time, then, when we can look at all of our calendars.
Peter Tessie, hi. And I'm leaving on the test.
She's meeting with him on the ninth.
Well, he's coming back at the eighth, so.
When's he going away?
I feel like March.
Any day now, I think, today, tomorrow.
Always going away at end.
Yeah.
Because you see the reaction back and forth an hour a day or two.
I told you, trust is a funny thing.
I understand, so I'll just tell him what the score is.
He'll never oppose me. The opposing will be next.
Thirteen.
That's wrong.
That's the official clock.
This is the official clock of the world.
You know, this comes from...
Can I go ahead and put these out?
Sure.
Sure.
Who provides the breakfast now in the inn as it is?
Make sure that you guys announce the postponements and all that.
You guys forgot the first time.
I know you're going to remind me about Fred and me.
About who?
Fred and I, don't talk.
Oh, no. That's a good point, but no, there's one other postponed item in our agenda.
What's that? Yeah, oh, yeah, it's a point.
So how do you read?
I'll let you announce who the voting members are.
Say, I'll let you announce who the voting members are.
Okay, ma'am.
And here it is.
On the record, two comments. First, item, item number seven, Seventeen Fort Hills Lane, has been postponed. Number two, the subject is the Harbor House Inn, One sixty-five Shore Road. In this particular application, part of our planning and zoning policy is that if a member of the Commission misses a briefing slash hearing date, the person who substitutes and participates, as a matter of policy, continues with the application. So we don't have any, so we don't have any pause, even though all members who are here can still have the voice, their comments, objections, issues, and so on. But the voting tonight will be as follows. First, Ms. Raymer, Ms. Raymer will sit for me, thank you, and for Mr. Brooks, Mr. Fox will sit, okay? They will be the voting members tonight, but all Commission members, including Mr. Brooks and myself, are open to make comments, suggestions, and issues, as I discussed. Understood, folks? Okay? Okay. Mr., who wants to comment? Mr. Tessie?
Yes. Mr. Heller, members of the Commission, and John Tessie representing the applicant.
John Tessie, legal counsel for the applicant, Mr. D'Engio, our engineer, is here, as Mr., as is Chris Dodaro, our client's architect. Mr. Russo, who spoke at the last meeting, our principal, is here this evening, and in fact, would like to speak to the Commission at the beginning this evening, and then we can follow up with questions of our various experts. If that's okay. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Chris Franco, and I'm one of the principals of the project, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to say a few remarks at the outset here. Yes, it's Franco. I was initially drawn to this project because of my interest in historical preservation, not because I was looking to develop condominiums in Old Greenwich. I had heard that the Harbor House Inn was for sale, and that the owners were considering a proposal from a local spec house developer to purchase the property, demolish the historic structure, subdivide the property, and build several new spec houses on the site. I was alarmed at the prospect of losing yet another important historic building in the area, and the last remaining historic inn by the Old Greenwich shoreline. Along with many others, I consider the Harbor House, which is a hundred and twenty years old, to be a landmark of Old Greenwich. When I heard about the plans, I contacted the owners and began to work with them to develop a plan to preserve and save the building. We needed a plan to adapt and reuse it in a way that would assure its continued existence, that would be financially viable, and that would be a positive thing for the community. If we cut through it all, the question on the table, in my view, tonight, is whether we favor saving the historic building and finding an appropriate way to use it so that it can function within the community in two thousand and fifteen and beyond, or whether we favor tearing it down and building several new spec houses on the site. Some have questioned whether the Harbor House is a worthy historical property in Old Greenwich, and whether the work we propose to do there is, in fact, historic preservation. These questions carry the implication that the Harbor House might not actually be a historic property, and it might not be such a big loss. If the building were to be demolished and the property subdivided and replacing the gracious nineteenth-century building with spec houses, might somehow be a benefit, a net benefit, to the community. I respectfully disagree with that view, and I would like to shed some light on these questions. The National Trust of Historic Preservation, which is broadly thought to be the gold standard for historic preservation, defines historic properties as, and I'm going to quote, "irreplaceable places across the country, from beloved local schoolhouses to well-known landmarks, places that illustrate the American story and all its richness." That's how a historic property is defined, and much of the impetus on this, this understanding of a historic property rests on the community and how the structure or site fits into the community. The Harbor House is just such a place, and I would like to share some facts about the property. The Harbor House was built in eighteen ninety-five as one of a number of seaside inns in what was then called Sound Beach. Sound Beach was, at that time, a popular destination for New Yorkers looking to escape from the heat of the city, particularly during the summer months, and at one point there were eleven such inns in Sound Beach. It was during this period that Mr. and Mrs. J. Kennedy Todd first visited Sound Beach and stayed as guests at one of the shoreline inns. Fortunately for us, they ultimately decided that this neighborhood would be where they would build their country home. But for the vibrant seaside inns of Sound Beach at the turn of the century, the Todds would not likely have discovered this neighborhood, in which case they would not have quietly assembled the six parcels that ultimately became their one hundred and forty-seven-acre seaside estate. If the Todds had not assembled that beautiful estate, the town of Greenwich would not today have our beloved Greenwich Point. The Harbor House is the last surviving turn of the century inn in Old Greenwich, and it's been recognized in Greenwich for decades as an important historical property. It was highlighted on the historical tour of Old Greenwich in nineteen ninety, which celebrated the town's three hundred and fiftieth anniversary. I have the brochure from that town, from that tour, right here, and the Harbor House was included on the tour and was recognized along with such other important historical properties as the Tomac Cemetery, and the Nathaniel and Jeffrey Ferris Houses, among others. The Harbor House is also a property that will be featured on the Founder's Day Tour of Old Greenwich this year, on July eighteenth, which is sponsored by the Greenwich Three Hundred and Seventy-Fifth Anniversary Committee. The Harbor House is recognized as the terminus of the former Sound Beach Trolley Line, and is directly across the street from the Old Trolley House, which occupied the small triangular site there. Among other interesting facts about the property, the Harbor House was the site of the coming-out debutante party for Claire Booth Luce, who was the first American woman appointed to a major ambassadorial post abroad, and who was celebrated as an author and as the accomplished wife and partner of Henry Luce, publisher of Time, Life, and Fortune magazines. On a personal note, it's hard for me to understand how anyone could seriously question the historical importance of the Harbor House. It is important and historical, not only because of its age, but also because of its cultural importance to the development of our community. One part of me can understand why a neighbor might try to seize this moment to eliminate legally non-conforming commercial operation from across the street. But with all due respect, I would contend that it is self-serving to think that the entire community should lose an important historic landmark, one that has been recognized by our community for decades for its historic and cultural importance, and that has been operating on that site for more than a century, because they believe erroneously, in my opinion, that spec houses versus this historic inn will, quote, "increase their property values." I say I believe this is erroneous, because I believe that many, many people in the community find a beautiful and restored historic landmark to be a far more attractive neighborhood feature than two non-distinguished spec houses on the site. I would also like to address the question of whether our plan for Harbor House constitutes historic preservation. I have some experience in this area, but I think it is helpful to share the National Trust for Historic Preservation's definition on this question. It is concise and simple. The National Trust says that, and I quote, "Preservation is saving historic places." That's it. There is no requirement that buildings be restored as one would an antique table or chair that is on its way to a museum. Buildings survive best when they are living and breathing places, which is why the best preservation work being done today is generally called historic restoration and adaptive reuse. Adaptive reuse refers to the process of reusing a historic site or building for a purpose other than that it was originally built or designed for. Adaptive reuse is considered a key factor and tool in preservation, and it is an essential strategy to avoid demolition of historic places. Preservation and adaptive reuse of historic buildings are my personal passion, and most of my volunteer and philanthropic efforts are focused in this area. In addition to the historic preservation work that I have led at Greenwich Point as the, as a founder and the president of the Greenwich Point Conservancy, which includes the Innisarden Cottage and the Old Barn Restoration, which is currently underway, in Old Greenwich, I have also restored a beautiful eighteen ninety-six shore colonial at One Ten Shore Road, which is just down the street from the Harbor House, and I am presently leading an effort to restore and preserve one of the oldest houses in Greenwich, the seventeenth-century Jeffrey Ferris House, which at One Eighty-One Shore Road is just three doors up from the Harbor House. I have also restored and adapted for reuse an eighteenth-century barn, a nineteen oh four stone cottage in backcountry Greenwich, and a nineteenth-century townhouse in historic Georgetown in Washington, DC. For those who doubt whether our plans for the Harbor House should be considered historic preservation, I would like to note the striking similarities between this current plan for Harbor House and the work that I led on behalf of the Conservancy at the Innisarden Cottage. The Harbor House was built in eighteen ninety-five. The Innisarden Cottage was built in nineteen oh three. The Harbor House has lost many of its original features over the years, including the addition of nonoriginal siding, asphalt shingles on the roof, several incorrect windows and doors, and some other additional changes to its lower level. The Innisarden Cottage suffered these exact same conditions. Our plans at both the Harbor House and the Cottage include restoring the foundation level, re-siding the exterior with original materials, restoring the original cedar shake roof, replacing worn-out windows and doors with energy-efficient replacements especially, specially constructed to replicate the originals, replacing all of the plumbing, electrical, and H V A C services with modern systems, and restoring certain limited interior features. The exact same thing at both Harbor House and Innisarden Cottage. The similarity on the interior features is also striking. In each case, the only original features we're saving included the central hall and the grand staircase, and the remainder of the interior in each of the Harbor House and the Cottage called for a complete redesign. So do these two projects, the Harbor House restoration and the restoration of Innisarden Cottage, constitute historic restoration and preservation? If you consider the Innisarden Cottage, the experts certainly think so. The Innisarden Cottage has received awards for historic preservation from the American Institute of Architects, from the Connecticut Trust for Historic Preservation, and from the Greenwich Historical Society. In fact, the Connecticut Trust for Historic Preservation stated that not only was it the best historic preservation that year, but one of the finest preservation projects in Connecticut in the past decade. We have worked very hard to develop a plan for the Harbor House building that will preserve this beautiful nineteenth-century structure for future generations, and as we've previously told this Commission, our plan includes placing a preservation easement on the facade of the building once the restoration is complete. The Harbor House presently has four separate units. These include three rental units on the lower level, and the fourth unit is the hotel, which has twenty-three guest rooms, a two thousand-square-foot conference facility on the lower level, a commercial kitchen, and a dining room. The hotel has operated on the site for one hundred and twenty years. For the past five years, the Harbor House has been a very sleepy operation. Mrs. Dolly Stedek, who operated the inn for decades, passed away two years ago, and since then, her children have only minimally operated the inn, as their intention was to sell the property. In the approximately three years before Dolly passed, she suffered with cancer, and she and her daughter Dawn, who cared for her during her illness, did not run the inn in a very vibrant way during that time. In contemporary times, the inn was busiest in the decade prior to nine eleven, when it ran year-round at over ninety percent occupancy, and also hosted many meetings and conferences in the conference facility. If you do the math, you will see that this indicates that there were more than seven thousand five hundred room nights per year at that point. During that time, Dolly and Dawn also developed, but did not complete, plans to expand the food service offerings at the inn, since it already operates limited restaurant services for its guests, and they believed that these could be expanded and open to the public as well. A good example of what a revitalized Harbor House might look like is the Homestead Inn in Bellhaven, which has guest rooms, meeting facilities, and a vibrant restaurant. My guess is that what the community should expect if the property were to remain and be operated as a hotel is something like the Homestead Inn. I think it's reasonable to expect that anyone who will pay millions of dollars to purchase the property, and millions more to renovate, will want it to become a much more vibrant place. I should also note that because of the attention our plans have generated, Dawn Stedek has been approached by a local person with hospitality experience and significant financial wherewithal, who has said that she would have an interest in developing just such a plan. Assuming the historic building is saved, and it's not demolished, the plan that we have developed, we believe, is much less impactful on the neighborhood than a plan to revitalize the hotel. Our plan includes restoring the full exterior of the building, as well as the remaining interior features, back to their beautiful, original condition, and in the process, reconfiguring the four units, which include the hotel, to become six residential units. All of the original fabric of the building is still there, and our restoration will respect the architectural integrity and beauty of the structure. We have eliminated the detached carport and covered walkway from the plan that was originally submitted. A revised plan has just four covered spaces, which are attached to the main building and partially underground at the elevation of the lower level of the main building. We have made the roof over these spaces flat, so that the covered spaces only project six and a half feet above grave. Now, I'm six-two, so that's just a couple of inches taller than me. Essentially, we've attempted to make these spaces disappear, so that people that are walking or driving by won't even see it. To be clear, while our plan does increase the number of units within the building from four to six units, the plan also includes eliminating the legally non-conforming commercial transient twenty-three-room hotel, the two thousand-square-foot conference facility, and the restaurant. We believe that this brings the property much more into conformance with the correct zoning for the neighborhood, and our plan is fully residential. We also believe this plan eliminates the likely huge increase in traffic that will occur if the hotel again becomes a vibrant commercial operation, as well as the negative issues that sometimes relate to operating a commercial hotel establishment in a residential neighborhood. As an example of one of the more serious issues, Dawn tells me that approximately seven years ago, they received a phone call alerting them that they had a registered sex offender staying on a long-term basis at the inn. They wouldn't have known this otherwise, as hotel guests are not required to provide such information. Of course, after learning this, they promptly had the guests move out. I would also like to know that we are very pleased that the Greenwich Historic District Commission unanimously endorsed the details of our project several months back, and that just last week, the chairman of the H D C wrote a follow-up letter to this Commission, supplementing the H D C's initial endorsement of our project. In the new letter, the chairman of the H D C discussed the historical importance of the Harbor House, and he noted, one, it's the last of the nineteenth-century shoreline inns that were important and central to the development of Old Greenwich; two, the village of Old Greenwich has been identified for the past several years as a key area of Greenwich that has lost more of its historic properties to demolition than any other part of town; and three, that an action strategy for the two thousand nine Plan of Conservation and Development in Greenwich is to protect historic and cultural resources. We were very gratified that the chairman of the H D C further stated, and I'll quote, "This project should be considered as a part of that proposal to protect historic resources, as its preservation is integral in maintaining the legacy of the recreational history of the village of Old Greenwich." The chairman concluded his letter by stating, and I quote again, "It is with ardent interest and conviction that I encourage the Planning and Zoning Commission to approve the plan for reusing the Harbor House Inn, One sixty-five Shore Road, as the plan demonstrates a creative, sustainable, and fiscally viable reuse of the building." In addition to the chairman of the Historic District Commission, we have received and submitted to this Commission more than twenty letters of support from others in the immediate area who have an immediate interest in the project, and with whom we've shared the plans. These letters are from residents of Shore Road. And three, that an action strategy for the 2009 Plan of Conservation and Development in Greenwich is to protect historic and cultural resources." We were very gratified that the chairman of the HDC further stated, and I'll quote, "This project should be considered as a part of that proposal to protect historic resources, as its preservation is integral in maintaining the legacy of the recreational history of the village of Old Greenwich." The chairman concluded his letter by stating, and I quote again, "It is with ardent interest and conviction that I encourage the Planning and Zoning Commission to approve the plan for reusing the Harbor House Inn, 165 Shore Road, as the plan demonstrates a creative, sustainable, and fiscally viable reuse of the building." In addition to the chairman of the Historic District Commission, we have received and submitted to this commission more than 20 letters of support from others in the immediate area who have an immediate interest in the project and with whom we've shared the plans. These letters are from residents of Shore Road, Oneida, Kiophrum, Meadow, Northorn, and other nearby streets. I note that these letters include letters from the only two neighbors who are immediately adjacent to the inn, one of whom lives on Oneida Road and one of whom lives on Shore Road, both of whom wrote to this commission expressing their support of our plan. So to summarize, we strongly believe that this landmark historic property should be saved from demolition, and that the best way to do this, the only way, is to craft a plan for the building to become a viable part of the community for 2015 and beyond. This means that the building will either need to continue to operate as a hotel, which would in all likelihood imply a much busier and more vibrant commercial operation there, or the alternative that we've proposed, which is to use the building in a residential way, which we think is more consistent with the residential character of the surrounding neighborhood. For this reason, we're hopeful that you'll approve our plan, and we feel that it's the best one for this property. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
As I recall, one of the questions the commission was asking yesterday was, "Do you know the history of the porte cochere?"
The...
When it was added and...
No, the porte cochere is original to the building.
Oh, it is original, so we thought it had been added later.
No, it wasn't added, and we considered keeping it, but the reason we're removing it is because we need to remove a lot of the impervious surface. There was a driveway. There was a...
Grab the microphone.
Mr. Franco, the mic.
I'm sorry, sorry.
We need those wireless, the ones that attach to people. One day...
Yeah, no, the porte cochere, the existing porte cochere is here, and there's currently a driveway that comes in and goes all the way around like this.
Right.
So in the interest of removing the driveway and adding a lot of green space to the property, it didn't make sense to have a porte cochere, because you're not going to drive under it. So we wouldn't object to keeping it from a historical perspective, but it just doesn't make sense with the redesigned site.
And then, so architecturally, the only substantive post-construction change to the building has been enclosing the porches. Is that correct?
No, these porches are already currently enclosed.
No, they're currently enclosed now.
Yes.
I'm saying, since it was first built, what have been the modifications to the buildings?
You're correct, enclosing the porches.
Enclosing the porch, all the wings, the back. I think one of the entrances was modified as well, from the look of the elevation.
Yeah. Another thing is that around the foundation of the building, it originally looked like this, and it had the arched windows. And so those were all, when they enclosed the porch, those were all removed, and there's just small, there's small rectangular windows down at that level now, and they eliminated, there was a different type of material, so it delineated the foundation level of the building. So that was done, the porches were enclosed. This porch has been modified somewhat. A few of the doors have been, and entrances have been modified.
Okay. And you're retaining the original design of the windows, as I, you're replacing the windows, but you're going to the original, the original style of windows?
Yes, we are. We haven't added or subtracted any windows. This window scheme is exactly the same window schematic in the original building, and many of the original windows still exist. They've been lost in certain places, and we're precisely replicating the windows with new windows and the same design. And on the lower level, we're creating windows from photographs of what the building looked like originally.
Originally.
Yes.
Mr. Russo, last time...
It's Franco.
When the discussion came up about the coverage for each apartment owner needing to have a covered walkway to their house, to their parking area, let me put it that way. You indicated that, from an economic point of view, that was a necessity, yet you still plan on having six apartments and now having only four covered garage spaces. How do you reconcile what you said last week, or pardon me, two weeks ago, with what you're saying tonight?
Well, we've talked to some of the folks that are interested in the units, and we've talked to just other folks that have knowledge about the marketplace, and most people feel strongly that they would like a covered space. There are some people that don't feel that it's essential. So we thought that we could perhaps get away with eliminating two of the covered spaces, so that only four of the buyers will have that option, and two of the buyers will not have that option. So we are taking a bit of a risk that there might not be any buyers that would be willing to take a unit without a covered space, but we actually think that that's a reasonable risk. We think that we will be able to find buyers.
Does that answer your question?
It answers my question.
Any other comments?
Mr. Russo.
Franco.
Franco, excuse me.
I might change my name.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks.
My own lawyer called me Russo, too.
They changed my name last week in your paper.
He said it was built in 1895. Was it on a larger piece of property in 1895?
It, I don't know the answer to that, but it probably was, because the back property line is literally, the back of the building is literally on the property line, so my guess is it didn't start out that way.
Okay. And so it's been in continuous use as an inn since 1895?
That's right.
Okay.
Something, there's a letter we got that says differently, that it's been other, it's had some other uses. One of the neighbors wrote in that it's occasionally had some different uses.
Mr. Stoddard's letter, I think.
Mr. Stoddard.
I'm sorry, repeat that.
Mr. Stoddard's letter intimated that there have been other uses. I think it's that one right on top, actually.
Well, what's the point here?
Just, Nick asked a question and...
Okay. Anybody else?
I should, I should note, Mr. Chair, that one of the, I think it was that same letter, had suggested that there were some violations of the special permit of the use, and Mr. Seale's done some research on that, if you want to address that.
Yeah, I quickly went through the digital database that we have available that goes back until 1988, and was unable to find any kind of records relating to any violations or really any work that's been done to the structure. I also looked through all the old paper complaint files in the Building Department to verify that there weren't any complaints that I could find on file in that office or the zoning enforcement office. So I'm not sure where the complaints went, if they were ever filed, but they certainly aren't on record with the Building Department.
Thank you.
And one other point here is that the applicant has filed under Section 6-141 of the zoning regulations. So one of the things that the commission has to review under that section is whether the proposed use is less detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing use. So to that end, one of the comments that keeps coming up in some of the neighbor letters and also from the commission itself is about the traffic impact of the use of a 23-room inn versus the use as a six-unit condo. So we did go ahead and request a comment from our traffic engineer, the Beta Group, and I'd just like to state for the record that we did receive a comment from them as dated June 15th, and it's part of the record. It's regarding a trip, excuse me, a trip generation assessment for a condo versus a bed and breakfast. And they use the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Publication, and the bottom-line assessment is that the six-unit condo would generate less traffic than the 23-room lodging facility by quite a substantial amount. The condo has 35 weekday trips versus a bed and breakfast, which they reviewed, since there's not a specific land use code for bed and breakfast, they did two alternatives. One was for more active use as a motel, and the other was the least active as an all-suites hotel. Under the all-suites, it was 144 weekday trips versus the 35 weekday trips for the condo, and under the motel, it was 210 weekday trips. So you can see there's quite a difference in terms of the traffic generation, so I just note that for the record also.
Thank you. Comments? Anybody else?
Mr. Franco, last time we had talked about what was happening on the roof. Can you shed any more light on that, please?
Well, we haven't made any changes since the last meeting. We talked about it being a widow's walk. We talked about there not being any gatherings up there. We talked about there not being any lights up there or furniture or anything like that, just an area to go up and observe the view, maybe have a cocktail and watch the sunset, if you're inclined to do so.
So if access to the roof, would it be through a legal stair or a ship's ladder?
No, there's a, there's a staircase on the, on the third floor, if you were to look at your floor plans.
I saw that, but I don't see any cover for the stair.
There's a stair, there's a staircase, and there's a hatch that slides. It's a hatch, yeah.
Do I recall you saying that the, there would be a limit to the number of people on the roof of 10?
I think, I recall that, yes.
That still is...
Yes, that, and we're going to put that in the bylaws.
We'll recall that.
Your mic.
Okay.
I'm sorry, are you increasing the area of the flat roof on the building?
No, no, we haven't done anything. There's been no change to the roof.
And are you going to be talking about the balconies and which, which units do have balconies and don't?
Well, this is the Shore Road side of the property, and this is the elevation there, and there are balconies on the second floor that kind of cut into this roof line here that are facing Shore Road. On the, on the second floor, on the other side, we only have one balcony in the front. We removed one of the balconies at the request of one of the neighbors, who lived several houses down. They had asked us to remove that balcony, and we did. And so there's just French doors there now, but there's no balcony. There's a French doors with a rail, which we're calling a Juliet balcony. And then with the new plan, since we've eliminated the detached carport and just put a couple of, well, four partially below-grade spaces, those are now, you can see them down here, they're adjacent to the building.
Could you lift that up?
Yeah.
Thanks.
This is the landscape plan, but you can see this well. This is the, these are the spaces. And so drive in, go down underneath, and so those spaces, the roof of those spaces are at the elevation of the first floor, so you can walk out on top of them. So those are technically balconies as well.
Are there, the units that are in the, I guess in the basement, do they have walkouts?
No, they don't.
They don't? So there's no balconies there?
No.
They're just the lower floor.
Can you explain why you have the massive walls coming out from that entrance? Yes, there. It just looks...
Well, they're not really massive. The reason we have those walls is because you're going down a slope here.
Yeah.
Yeah, so they're just, they're, they're not, they're obviously taller at the bottom of the slope, you know, than they are when you're at grade.
It's not, it's the, right there.
It's the projection into the park.
Oh, this is not a, this is not, there's no wall associated with that. That's just, that's just a one step up.
But look at the elevations, because it looks...
Elevation show a wall.
Elevation show a wall and pillars.
This right here?
Yeah.
No, I'll show you where that is. It's, it's just the trick of looking at plans. That's right here.
So what's the purpose of that?
It's a, well, it's not a wall, it's not a wall, it's a rail, and it's just got a pillar with a light. It's like a light post.
It just, you're, again, going closer and closer to Shore Road, it just didn't look and everything else looked interesting.
We could, I'm not so sure that I love that anyway. We could, you know, we would certainly look at taking that out if that was an objection to anybody.
And then the last point is, what's the purpose of all the patio in the front yard? If we're trying to give back more green space, what's your intent for that patio and the gazebo?
Well, you know, this entrance is, and there's a porch in here, too. I mean, we, we kind of see it functioning as the front door and also as the back door, because there is really no other yard. So, you know, folks that live here, if they want to sit out in the, in the garden, this is a, there's a lot of tall landscaping around this, so it becomes a nice enclosed green space. If it was a requirement, we could eliminate that and just make it grass, but the point is that it's a yard, you know, for people to use.
Okay.
One last comment, which might be, I'm not sure is right, but there seems to be some additional parking, some additional asphalt in front of those carports.
Here?
It's quite a deep, yeah. It's quite a deep driveway there. It's, it's on one of your drawings, it's the straight line right there, and one of the drawings, it's, it comes in a little bit.
You're very, you're very observant, and you're correct.
We know that.
Because this was the, oh, sorry. This is the landscape plan that was done by our landscaper, and they've taken some time to work on it, and there was one new iteration of the site plan after the landscaper got the, the site plan to work with. And so you're very correct that we've eliminated any extraneous asphalt here, which also gives us more landscaping opportunities.
Except, why, why, when you come off of Shore Road, why didn't you just come in and go into a curve and go straight to the left?
In your radius.
Because you seem to have a, the, the...
The notch.
The two west garages have the proper spacing to the, for the asphalt. The two east garages have like six or seven feet more.
So you're asking why we don't just go like this?
Yep, and go into the radius.
I could ask Tony DeAndrea that. Tony?
So the question is, is there any reason that we don't have this line like this, since we've cut it back here? Moved?
As long as there's 23 feet there, you can maneuver. Don't say anything, take the phone.
I was talking to him. For the record, you can, you can bring that in if you wish, but what I wanted to do is be able to get the cars to be able to make that radius and be able to maneuver again into the garage. So it's just an awkward turn.
If they can, if they can maneuver in the last two...
The reason it works a little differently on the last two is that we're already moving forward. You turn in, you have your ample 23 feet back out and turn. It can be moved.
Not very convincing.
There's no other reason. We can move it in if you wish. It's not a problem.
It would just get rid of some of the asphalt.
I'm with you. I'm all for green space. Yeah, no, I like that idea. Let's move this back like this. And then the other thing that we've done, and I, this is really primarily an aesthetic, for aesthetic purposes, is this portion of the driveway, we're going to make gravel, and the, the reason is we just think it'll be more attractive in a residential neighborhood.
We discussed this a little bit yesterday, and the question is, it's, it's a positive idea, but the question is, how do you mark where the parking space is? What is your technique?
Well, this is a good question, and we've got two ideas for that. One is, you'll see that we have these Belgian block courses, is to do a single Belgian block course in the gravel for each of the spaces, which we think would be very attractive. Another idea that was suggested was that there would just be a little sign for each person, you know, something like that. I'm personally in favor...
Armor is better than...
Yeah, I like the fir, I like the first idea. I think it would be very attractive and very functional as well.
So there is a, there is a thought being given to that.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Okay, a public would like to speak.
Quick question, Mr. Franco. Could you describe a little bit about the facade easement? Is it one facade, all facades? What are you envisioning in terms of the facade easement that you've generously offered?
What we're envisioning is a, a facade easement for the entire, for the entire, all four facades of the building.
Okay.
The reason that we want to do that is because we're doing this, you know, sort of painstaking historic restoration of the building, and we would like to see, to see it stay that way in perpetuity.
And is this the kind of thing that you're envisioning would be crafted and worked with staff while the buildings and construction part of a CEO would be filed on the land record?
Yes, yes.
That's how you envisioning the process?
And I'm, and we haven't had a discussion yet, but we would envision that some entity like the Historic District Commission or some like entity would be the beneficiary of the easement, so they would have the right to enforce it.
Okay, thank you.
Have we covered any other, yes?
The, this, it's not a garage, but the, the...
Covered, the covered parking spaces.
The covered parking spaces. Do they, are they all right now that they're attached from the standpoint of a setback?
Yes, they are.
What's the distance there?
Well, Tony, I mean, yeah, Dawn, can you speak for them?
They moved them back.
We're talking about the setback here.
I can't hear you.
Right.
We're just speaking internally for a second, to make sure we have the same story.
A lawyer-architect conference.
Look, this is, we went through this in terms of what's the front and what's the rear. This...
Say 40 feet.
Right. I didn't think you were saying something differently. It has, it has to do with the fact that we can go 50% again, extension.
Depends on what the front yard is.
No.
This is your side, street side.
I don't think you asked that difficult a question.
No, I just wanted to be...
Well, there's, you can have two different front yards, and there's a different area.
I think, I think we need to go on the record for what you're putting, what your proposal is on front yards, rear yards, and side yards.
We went through, we went through that.
I thought we did, so...
Okay, that's why I wanted to just be consistent, because what Tony was suggesting is that, well, anyway, what Tony was suggesting was a little bit different. is that, well, anyway, what Tony was suggesting was a little bit different than what I was saying. Shore, Shore Road is considered a street, I think we've agreed that Shore Road is considered the street side yard, right? And the ZIO, as noted on page 75, agreed with that interpretation. So with Shore Road being the street side yard, this is the rear. Under 140, section 6141, I'll get the section out of the regulations, where you have a non-conforming yard, you're entitled to the, you're entitled to extend that non-conforming yard up to 50% of the distance of the portion of the building that is non-conforming. And under that particular section, obviously, this extension as well, less than that, plus we've actually pulled it in. So it's under that particular subsection, which I can...
I think the question was, what's the setback? What is the setback from Shore Road?
Oh, the actual setback from Shore?
I thought it was from Shore Road.
From Shore, I think it's...
Shore Road is not an issue. It's a street...
Forty-four point two or something like that? It was tough to read.
Yeah, sorry, that's a street side yard. The setback from the backyard is 15.1 feet.
That measurement's 15, and you're saying that's legal?
That's legal because you're allowed to extend this, this non-conforming yard under our regulations 50, 50% again of this distance. So we're well within 50% of the, of the length of the building, obviously. Insofar as the setback, this is the street side yard on, on the, on Shore Road, and we're well back, it's 30 feet, which is well within the, the distance allowed for a street side yard in that zone.
It clearly is further setback from Shore Road than was the accessory structure of the carports.
Yes, yes. Yes. I'm saying they're both legal for different reasons, different sides for different reasons.
Have we covered every question, all questions? Okay, the public, who would like to speak? Yes, sir.
Hello, my name is Chad Fauzer, and I live on 9110 Road, which is two houses down from the Harbor House Inn.
Sorry, did you say two houses down?
Two houses down, yes. It's F-A-U-S-E-R. I'd like to read a prepared statement, but I do want to address a couple of things that came up tonight, because this is, we're learning things on the fly as neighbors. You know, number one, these new plans were only submitted on Thursday, and we're sitting here on Tuesday. I'm not sure how this process works. I'm new to this, but it seems a little silly that we have had two business days to try to digest these new plans. You mentioned the traffic study. I mean, I'm not sure how you can compare a bed and breakfast to a hotel or a motel or a hotel of suites, so I question the credibility of that. So I'm just trying to go real time. Mr. Franco spent a lot of time, you know, talking about what this could be, you know, the implicit threat, you know, to the neighborhood. The Homestead Inn, the working kitchen, I mean, these are all things that if you look at the history of this, of this inn, they serve cereal, and they don't have a working kitchen. I mean, they serve fruits and cereal. That's what was advertised on their actual website. So again, these are threats, try to scare the neighbors, but I just want to, you know, he spent a lot of time embellishing on what this could be. I don't really think this could be at the Homestead Inn. And, you know, I think, you know, kind of that's my commentary. I'd like, and the other thing I just want to highlight, and we'll talk about it a little bit, again, this is so real time. We went from a 40-foot carport, remember, we went 68 feet to 40 feet in the middle of the last meeting. Now we have this attached structure that somehow has gained massive balconies. You know, these things are unbelievable, right here on top. I mean, you could have 30 people sitting there with, in their bathing suits, you know, on Shore Road. It's going to be a great place to watch the Greenwich Half Marathon one day, but it doesn't seem as if it's in the keeping of, you know, a historic restoration. I'm going to move, and the other question I have for you guys before I read my statement is, we provided the, the members of the commission with, you know, the results of our petition and the comments. Did you guys receive those?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. Do I need, do I need to read through the whole petition again for the record, or you guys all received that? Okay. I mentioned my name, and again, thank you for the time today to listen to my comments. I also want to thank Mr. Franco, you know, for his history lesson on Old Greenwich, as well as an explanation of historic restoration. The last time I addressed the commission, I had shared with you that we were appreciative of the developer's willingness to make certain modifications to the proposed project, but that we as neighbors had engaged with the developer because we were uncertain of how this process would unfold and wanted the best outcome if the project was ultimately approved. I emphasize that I was not in support of the project in its current form, and I want to make that point again. Myself, as well as many of my fellow neighbors and Greenwich residents, are not in support of this project in its current form because we believe it is more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing use. I would also note for the record that we have had no contact with the developer since the last meeting of the commission. As we understand it, according to section 6-141 of the code, a grandfather non-conforming use can be converted to another use if it meets certain standards, I think it's 6-15 and 6-17, and, quote, "is not more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing use," end quote. Clearly, the determination of whether the new proposed use is more detrimental to the neighborhood than its existing use is subjective. As neighbors, we feel strongly the increased traffic and potential negative effect on surrounding property values associated with the addition of six three-bedroom condominium units with a large covered parking structure, I can still say that, right, it's a large covered parking structure, is more detrimental to the neighborhood than its existing use. Given this subjectivity, we decided it might be helpful to the commission to create a petition that sought the opinions of a broader group of neighbors and Greenwich residents. And I want, I want to make an important point. I am here not only to represent my own interests and the interests of some of my neighbors, but also for all Greenwich residents. In situations like this, the neighbors that are the most affected are the first to know what is going on, and it becomes our responsibility to take the lead on any opposition. What I have learned in this process is that there are many others in the community that are concerned with the situation. It appears to me that the developer is effectively using a loophole in the regulations to drive above-market financial gains. We all appreciate the desire to preserve historic structures in the town of Greenwich, but many believe this should not be allowed to happen if the result is harming the surrounding area. Many fear that the, that the, in the end, the new proposed structure will have little resemblance to the original charming Harbor House Inn. We were very careful in our wording of the petition to address the heart of the issue of whether the conversion is more detrimental to the neighborhood than its existing use. We submitted the petition along with over 150 signatures and the many comments to Bob Seale on Monday morning. I am also pleased to say we are up to 165 signatures as of the time of this meeting, as the momentum continues. This overwhelming support clearly shows that many in the surrounding neighborhood and broader Greenwich community are concerned about this project in its current form. I'm not going to read it, read it, because we kind of talked about that. We have also received some very supportive comments from the community, and I would like to highlight a few. This comment comes from Rob Buckingham of Greenwich. "Converting from seasonal inn to full-time residences would greatly increase traffic and hazards to young children riding bicycles and playing in the street. Moreover, converting to a multi-unit residence would irrevocably change the character of the neighborhood for the worse. Please do not approve this project." Trip Freeman, Greenwich, Connecticut. "I have lived and or worked in Old Greenwich and Riverside for most of my life. The Harbor House Inn is a beautiful building but from a time when people took the train to OG for summer vacations. The neighborhood has grown and become established with very valuable homes and is family-oriented. The conversion of this building to condos does not conform to the surrounding community and should not be allowed to proceed." There are many other comments like this, but I will spare us all the time, because I know you have a copy of them. So where does that leave us? We believe we have proven there is critical mass within the community that believes this project and future use of six condos is more detrimental to the neighborhood than its existing use. That doesn't mean that we are unreasonable neighbors with a single-minded end goal of seeing this historic structure torn down. Ironically, we might be more sincere about preserving this historic building than Dawn Studdard herself, as we came across her listing for sale of the property where she advertised it as two building lots. Clearly, she stumbled upon a better financial deal for herself with the proposed project, or more likely a smart developer did, and she is now changing her tune and is now trying to save the building. We recently came across a section of the Greenwich Municipal Code that seems to deal with exactly what our situation is. Clearly, the commission wants to preserve historic buildings in Greenwich, and we are supportive of that concept. The code references historical overlay zones, also referred to as HOs, and I have no idea whether this has been officially designated as an HO, but that shouldn't really matter. I think we all heard Mr. Franco's argument about why this is historic structure, and so we're going along with that. You know, according to the regulations, and what matters is that someone smart wrote into the code details of uses for special permits in historic overlay zones that specifically addresses the number of drilling units allowed in a residential zone when using a special permit. There is a formula that, when applied to this situation, would allow for only two units, with the ability for the P&amp;Z to extend that to three units. I mean, there's a math in a formula that talks about 12,000 square feet in an R12 zone, 24,000 square feet is what this is, you divide, you times, multiply by 1.2. So, I mean, it gets to two units, and then it says that, you know, that you guys have the right to make three. Why wouldn't the commission use this part of the code as a guidepost for what should be permitted here? Let's take the subjectivity out of the equation. It seems perfectly fair and reasonable to many of us. I believe that if the project called for three units, and the end result was a structure that looked exactly like the original charming bed and breakfast, including the original porches, I think that's a huge part that was brought up tonight. I mean, what, the true history of this had beautiful porches. That's what I could dream of driving up, you know, to Todd's Point or Greenwich. So we sacrificed a little bit of square footage, you know, so we sacrificed a little bit of profits. What would be so bad about, you know, going all the way and getting to the original porches? And if it didn't have extra parking structures, larger windows and giant balconies, that might be something that is not more detrimental to the neighborhood than its existing use. I want to repeat, we're not trying to tear this thing down. We're saying three units, it looks like the original charming bed and breakfast, it has porches, it doesn't have a covered parking structure, it doesn't have giant balconies all over the place, you know, that, that seems reasonable, and I think people get behind that. It's not more detrimental to the neighborhood. The developer will argue that it is not economic, but we have heard from multiple architects and developers that it is. Shouldn't the burden of proof be on the developer? This project has received enough publicity that if the current developer decides to pass, if, if the commission, you guys, mandate three units, another developer will very likely step up to the plate. Maybe they won't make as much money, and maybe Dawn Studdard will need to sell the inn for a lower price, but the project has a high likelihood of being economically viable, according to our sources. The last point that I would like to make is, is that it was brought, oh, I'm going back to the original, you know, brought to attention that the latest plan showing the parking structure attached to the condominium, including new giant balconies facing Shore Road, was only submitted on Thursday. By my math, that is three full business days ahead of this meeting. I admit, I haven't had time to fully digest this new structure, and I'm pretty sure many others have not as well. We might have three, had 300 signatures on our petition if the community saw the giant balconies facing Shore Road. In summary, I urge the commission to either outright reject the proposal as is, or at least postpone the decision, given that no one has had time to react to the latest proposed plans, and we clearly have a community that is not supportive of the project. On behalf of myself, my many concerned neighbors, and the 165 people that have signed the petition, I would like to thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Who else would, ma'am?
My name is Sue Baker, and I have been coming and going for over 47 years along Shore Road to do my work at Todd's Point or Greenwich Point, often multiple times a day. And I've watched that whole area, and I've always been appreciative of the fact that the old inn had, was still there with that great streetscape, so much open space around it, because the one on the other corner on Northorn a few decades ago was sold, and there was a kind of not-attractive gigantic house that filled up the whole space there. So my first concern, when I heard that the Suddicks wanted to sell, and I heard that a developer was interested in splitting the lots, my first thought was, oh my God, there goes the streetscape and all the open space around that beautiful building, much less the beautiful building, because there would be two mega mansions that would be kind of border to border with the legitimate setbacks, but taking up a lot of the space. And everyone has said they're very interested in preservation of old buildings. It's kind of hard to do unless you are the owner and willing to preserve it. And this is a case where a new owner is willing to preserve it. We have enough trouble preserving the things that we own in the town, and I've been involved with Greenwich Point Conservancy as far as protecting those old buildings that are all over 100 years old, and seeing them restored to their elegance of a former time. So I think that that could happen here. Someone mentioned a former use. There was an interesting former use, short-lived for that building, and that was during World War I, when the US government took over the building to house people who would become part of the ambulance corps and would have been sent overseas in the whole medical corps to drive ambulances, but fortunately, 1918 came and the war ended, and that, that occupation for the building ceased. But I don't think it's been ever used for anything other than multiple units housing people for a reason, no other commercial use. So just in the interest of preservation of the building and of preservation of the, as much open space as possible around it, and as far as the traffic goes, I know it's been challenged, the, the information that Katie presented, and I have no knowledge of that. But I would think that if these are fairly high-end apartments, you're not going to have lots of families occupying, probably maybe older people who are in Florida for the winter and want to be there in the summer. So I can't imagine the traffic is a really legitimate issue. As far as 165 names against it, wow, that's a very small neighborhood. So I don't know where those names came from, nor can I imagine why, unless you lived in immediate several-block radius of that neighborhood, you would be upset. So if you're going after names that are way beyond the neighborhood, I'm sure Mr. Franco could find equally as many names for people who enjoy seeing it as it is and come and go on that corner, and for people who are for preservation, and for maybe people who are looking for a really interesting alternative for a condominium in their immediate future. So those are the only things that I would say, other than I love the idea that this corner and this building could be preserved and restored the way Mr. Franco has done other restorations. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Yes? Who's speaking now, please? I can't see who it is. Excuse me, let somebody else talk before you come back.
The vast majority of...
Please, please. Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Bill Stoddard. I live at 50 Shore Road. I don't live in the immediate vicinity of this facility, but I do go to Greenwich Point every day with my wife. Just a bit, a bit of background, we live in a house that was built in 1725. The garage is a former 1690 house, circa 1690, that was attached to the 1725 house. We put an addition on several years ago. The architect recommended that we scrape the entire house, take it down, that if we did not do that, from the money we put into the addition, we would lose close to a million dollars of value if we didn't take it down. We used the architect, but we told him we were not going to take it down. We were just going to build onto it and continue to use that 1725 and 1690 house combination to live in. So my wife and I are very attuned to saving old houses. The house that we moved from was 54 Shore Road. That's a house built in the 30s. And we divided the lot such that no one can put a massive house, it was an oversized lot, double lot, we divided it. No one can put a house on that, a large house today. So hopefully that house will remain standing after we sell it. I wanted to, to just highlight a couple, several points. I've been kind of the secretary of this group, if you will. I was appointed, because I was kind of looking at people's responses and so forth and making notes of them.
You got your letter, Mr. Stoddard.
Yes, thank you. And, and, and so I've just been kind of the recording secretary, so I'm the messenger, although I do have some concerns here that I will, I will elaborate on. By the way, the inn is on its original lot. If you look at map 160 in the town hall in the registry here, you will find the map of, that the inn went on, of the plot that it went on from the Kewafrum estate. As to, as to the multiple uses in the past, the off-permit, potentially off-permit uses, well, I'm not sure if that's true or not. I did refer to it in my letter. That would have to be validated by looking at the original permit and seeing whether it allowed apartments to be there, long-term rental apartments. And also, a broker's office has been in there in recent years. But that's neither here nor there at this point. That's irrelevant, because that's water over the dam. We're looking forward, not, not back. back. And by the way, if you would like to see the names on the petition and where those people live, I think we can probably provide that to people to respond to the last lady's The point that Mr. Franco made about multiple spec houses being built on there, there would only be two houses going on there. I think it would be quite possible and feasible to get a small consortium together to pay Ms. Studick a market price for that property, and then hold it and turn around and resell it to a private party who was not going to build a spec house there, and even possibly put architectural constraints on it. Here's where my concern runs. I'm a fan of old houses, as my wife is, she got me into it. She was raising an old house and got me initiated. My concerns are that the law says, the rules say, in all states, that special permit can be granted to grandfather a property when the zoning laws are put in or changed, but that when that use ends, then it's to revert back to its original state of the new zoning, the R12 in this case. That's what normally happens, goes back to single-family residents. I don't have any objection to saving this, to saving this property, if it's saved in the way that it looks now. One of my concerns is it will not be conserved in that manner. A six-unit condo is an overburden, a clear overburden of the green space that you people have been pushing very hard and that we have to comply with, that I have spent a lot of money complying with, with my properties, and a lot of other people have. The green space would amount to about a third of what an R12 minimum lot would have, for six families. Six families and their kids and guests and so on and so forth. That green space would quickly turn to a brown space, I think, with all the back and forth of the kids playing and so forth, unless they go out and play in the street, which is likely to happen, presenting a traffic problem, a danger to the kids, a danger to the neighbors. The lot area building code is obviously, it's like putting an R3 or an R4 sub-zone into an R12 zone. That's not very nice. It could happen again if it's allowed here, it can happen again, and again, and again. It sets a precedent. The six-unit condo of 2,000 square feet, it's kind of like a shoebox type of thing. It would attract, if I were to own one, I would consider renting it to a city person coming up for summer, for five or six months. Why not? Be good business. What's to say that a number of people won't do that? And we'll have a bunch of city people up here with the kids and guests and so on and so forth, hanging off the balconies, towels drying, airing out the sleeping bags, et cetera, et cetera. These are the concerns that I have and other people have about what that might turn into as a six-unit condo. I have no concern about a three-unit condo, let's say, and I've checked around with a couple of architects and a developer, and I'm going to have a conversation with a couple of more, as to the feasibility of building this, renovating this with a gut renovation, and making it into a three-unit condo, which would not sell for $2 million per unit, but more like three. Would that be economically viable? The answer I'm getting is, yes, it would. It likely would. The other question that I've asked the architects and the developer is, can this unit be preserved in its original form, that is, the four walls or whatever number of walls it has? It's probably a balloon-framed building, the old stick, not a platform-framed building the way modern buildings are, but so, the old balloon frame, which is a firetrap by definition, that would have to be gutted out, and if those four walls have integrity, they could remain, but if they don't have integrity, if they're rotten, or too thin, or too weak, or whatever, they have to come out of there, the thing has to go down to the foundation and be rebuilt from scratch. And then, how are we to be sure, number one, is it still a historic building at that point? I don't think so. Even if it looks like the existing building, I doubt it. I mean, tell me, is it historic or not? I don't know. In my eyes, it wouldn't be historic. The point that Mr. Franco made about multiple house, spec houses going on there, there are two lots there, two R12 minimum lots. Each can take around, I think the R12 times 3.315 gives you about 3,700, 3,800 square-foot house can go on there. Not a mansion, a nice modest house, kind of house I live in now, modest. A lot of us have been made to conform to your building code that you guys come up with, you people come up with, ladies and gentlemen, and we appreciate that code, we live by that code, we spend a lot of money to conform to that code, we go through a lot of grief with lawyers and surveyors and so forth to conform with that code. You know, why isn't what's good for the goose, good for the gander? That's the kind of question that I keep hearing again and again. And so, just to close, I don't like the idea, I do like the idea of keeping the historic buildings. I congratulate and support financially that activity in this town, not only in my own property, but in other situations where they're asking for donations. I would suggest, and I have suggested, a couple of things here. Number one, a petition went around, I don't know who started it, I did sign it, I was probably number 110 or something like that to sign it, so rather recently, don't know how long it's been out there and so forth. I have read a lot of the comments, talked to some of the people. I would suggest that we put it to a vote. Let's put the ayes against the yays, the pros against the cons, and see how it comes out. And I will mention again that the signatures that I've seen are mainly from that area, not from as far down as I am, I'm sure, I'm down between Tomac and Sound Beach. So, that's what I have to say about it. Again, I congratulate people trying to save buildings, old buildings, it's our heritage, I've been here, we've been here 25 years, plan to stay a lot longer, God willing. Want things to be good, want things to look nice and so forth, want the, love the old feel of the place, but not at the expense of having a bunch of rental units with people running around, the noise, traffic, the kids playing stick hockey and the, or street hockey, or stickball in the streets, because of overflow of lack of green space and so forth. So, if we can find a way to skin this cat with a three condo deal, I'm in, I'm even buy one.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, if I could just interrupt for a quick second and just let everybody, just so we're all on the same page here, the role of the Planning and Zoning Commission is very limited to whether or not any proposal before them complies with the Building Zone Regulations. It is, the public comment is extremely valuable, and it's welcomed, but it is, again, very limited in terms of the regulations. So, that's what the commission's role is here. Does this proposal comply with the Building Zone Regulations? Not how many people are in favor, how many people are against. I just wanted to note that.
Thank you for your comment. Appreciate it. Who else would like to speak?
Good evening. My name is Terry Kerwin, I was here before. I too want to address the comments about the petition, I was very involved in organizing it. For someone to stand up here in front of you who has never even seen the 165-plus names that are on there, it's appalling to me that they would suggest that it's almost a fakery. These are all, 90% of these names are living within a two-block radius of the Harbor House Inn.
I just counted 50 names are outside of Old Greenwich, so...
Well, some of the names, some...
I'm just challenging your presentation.
I'll give you an example, all right, maybe the percentage is off and I shouldn't do that, but I'd like to give you an example of one signature who lives on Rocky Point Road, has a home there, and their residence is in New Jersey for tax purposes.
Ma'am, we appreciate your comment.
Okay, fine.
Thank you.
Fine. I also want to address Chris Franco's point about, you asked about what couldn't happen on the roof, and I was a little bothered by the last minutes that I read, that it seems to be scattered all over the place as to what's going to go in the bylaws if by chance you were to approve this. So, I would like to make it perfectly clear what's been stated that's going to go in the bylaws and the lack of use restrictions on that roof patio. And he says that there will be a limitation of the number of people that can go up there, don't know what that is, maybe it's 10. It would be nice if that was clarified. No parties, no swimming pool, no furniture, no lighting, no amplified music. That's what he said at the last meeting that would go in the bylaws, and I want on record, all concise, that that is the activity that doesn't belong on the rooftop.
Ma'am, let me interrupt for a second, because it's an end to what you're saying. I'm not impressed by bylaws that people can change. We wouldn't have a say in that if there's a bylaw and the six owners of the condos should elect to change, then it would have no...
Well, then perhaps it's something that we...
I think there is another solution to that, however, it could be in the conditions in our approval of the project.
I think any action we would take, if it were to approve it, would have these conditions within that, and then it would allow the zoning enforcement officer to enforce those conditions.
The conditions is just outlined here?
Yeah, thank you for your comment. What else?
The other thing is that I still don't completely understand what the presentation in front of the HDC was for, or what that letter is granting. I know this group never heard from anyone else because I attended the presentation. What is going on here? How can they endorse a plan that, quote, preserves the architecture structure of Greenwich's past, when the building won't look anything, absolutely nothing, like it looked in 1895? Look at the size of these new patios, of people hanging out over Shore Road. Everybody in town who comes back from Todd's Point can wave at them on the patio in their bikinis as they rent the apartments during the summer months. This is not a preservation of a historic building. I'm very confused, I really am. I thank you for your time. I would also endorse what has been said before, three units in here, that seems very reasonable. The land would be able to accommodate all cars that would be owned by people who live in units of that size. At this point in time, with six Jersey Shore condominium apartments on Shore Road, if we fill these places with families, no one can say who, you all want to say that there's going to be empty nesters and they'll hardly ever be occupied, we have no idea if that's the case. I had four cars in my house, almost five, when I was raising all of my children in my house. There is no way that six units will hold all the cars of three bedrooms, times six, they'll be parking on Wanita Road. I appreciate your time, thank you.
Have I missed anybody?
My name is Allison Lee. I grew up in town, and I just want to say that I'm very much nostalgic about historical buildings. I've watched the projects that Chris Franco has worked on with Chris D'Addaro, and I have a lot of respect for the end result, and I trust that what they're doing would be to the standards that I would like to see in preserving this building. I think the building does represent the story of Sound Beach and the town of Old Greenwich, and I love telling that story to my kids, hope to tell it to my grandkids one day, and I love that that is part of the story. My husband grew up on Wanita, watched the other inn burn down, and he also has some interesting stories about that, and the whole landscape of that, of that area would change dramatically if the inn and the building were not there. So, I'm very much in support of the project in the sense that it restores the building also, as a real estate agent in town, as far as addressing the values and what it might do to, I live on Shore Road as well, if I didn't say that, so what it might do to the values of Old Greenwich and so forth, as far as, from a real estate perspective, it's a very, there's a void in town for people that want to have a smaller place, a turnkey situation, a home that maybe they could take their home, that's a bigger home in Old Greenwich or Riverside, and split it between two different locations, be it Florida or somewhere else. So, I think that the need and the value is there, and that's from a real estate perspective, so that's what I wanted to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else, folks?
There's a lady behind me.
Is somebody...
No, she wanted to come back.
I apologize, I did forget to send anything. I apologize, the landscaping details, they're incomplete. I don't understand what is going up along Wanita Road from the driveway that is going to be closed up, all the way down to the, going deeper down into Wanita Road to the driveway, that they have there for the service people. The landscaping plans, you specifically asked them to prepare and show the screening, it's incomplete. I was told we're going to have an eight-foot hedge all along Wanita Road, it's not on the plans. I don't see it. I would appreciate if we had complete landscape plans.
Mr. Chair, landscaping plan did come in today. Perhaps there's someone here who can walk the audience through the plan, when the time is right.
Mr. Tessie?
First, Donald. When you come back, you...
Mr. Tessie, Mr. Franco?
This one had...
Go ahead.
...up there.
Do you have a more detailed?
Yeah.
Thank you. Yeah, it's the same plan, actually. Here, it's...
It's the detail, you can see the individual trees.
Yeah, you can see, this plan is not in color, so it's clearer, you know, where the trees are and the hedges and whatnot, but...
We all have that.
Yeah, I'm going to let you hold this.
Sorry, sorry.
But there is an existing private hedge along Shore Road, and that will be retained.
There's the inn.
There is an existing private hedge that goes around from Shore Road onto Wanita, and that will be retained. There is a new private hedge that will be added along the entire length of the property along Wanita, down to where the new service entrance is. I don't really want to call that a service entrance, because it's more than just that.
Okay.
But in any case, there, this hedge, this existing hedge has got to be kept relatively low, because there's sightline issues when people are entering and exiting the property.
That's the one on Shore Road.
The one on Shore Road, yeah. This hedge is intended to be tall, eight feet, you know. There are other, there are trees and other types of planting materials that were added, so it's not just a private hedge. There's a schedule on the side that indicates what the various types of plants are that have been proposed. There's also an area, a green area here, which is intended to be a lawn area for the guests, and this has got high hedges around it too, so that it won't be visible from people that are walking.
I think the question was, this woman asked, she hadn't seen this.
Well, you know, we apologize for that. We've been working very hard, you know, we've got great folks that have been working very hard to, you know, the site plan changed, and then the landscaping plan had to change, so I'm actually really pleased that the folks that are working with us have been able to work as quickly as they have, so...
To the north, there seems to be an absence.
I got it.
Sorry. To the north, there doesn't seem to be any landscaping up there, was...
Along here?
Yes.
Well, you know, there's existing landscaping there between Mrs. Babcock's property and the inn, and so I guess we could have the existing, we don't plan any changes along that property line between her house and the inn, but we could, if it would be useful, we could add the existing landscaping to the plan.
Yes, well, it should be. I mean, you're showing the existing private hedges and so forth around the other side.
Yes, you're correct.
I think the north side should be added. To the west, you're showing some planting, which of course is not on your property.
No, although we are going to be providing this landscaping.
What is it?
It's tall arborvitae.
Okay.
And...
The next-door neighbor, I assume, is in agreement with this.
Yes, this next-door neighbor and this next-door neighbor are the two that wrote letters to you, supporting our plan, and we mentioned that we were going to put hedges along here, and they very generously offered to let them do it on their property, because they thought it would breathe better.
I think whatever you're going to do to the north should be shown on the plans.
We'll make sure we do that.
Okay, any final comments now? Well, wait a second, we have somebody else who wants to talk.
Keep it short. I'm Jack Trout. I live in the 115-year-old house diagonally across the street from this inn. To me, this looks, comes down to, not so much as preservation, but financial upgrading. That seems to me what really the bottom line here is, you're trying to, to me, by the time this thing is finished, it's not going to be so much preservation, it's just how much, how much value can I add to this thing? And I think that's what you're facing here in this particular thing. I live in the 115-year-old house diagonally across the street from the inn. To me, this looks, comes down to not so much as preservation, but financial upgrading. That seems to me what really the bottom line here is. You're trying to... To me, by the time this thing is finished, it's not going to be so much preservation. It's just how much value can I add to this thing? And I think that's what you're facing here in this particular thing. Pluses and minuses.
We don't deal with that, sir.
Pardon me?
We don't deal with that.
You don't deal with financial upgrading? Okay. Well, then, that's... Because so much is made about this whole thing about preservation.
That's different. We're talking preservation.
We are concerned with that.
Oh, you're concerned. It doesn't seem to be a lot of preservation going on here. Okay?
Did I miss anybody now? Okay. Final comment?
Donald, there was a fellow who spoke in opposition and wanted to come up and clarify something and you wouldn't let him because he...
If he wants to come up, he could go now.
But now you've called on the lawyers for the project.
Excuse me one second. Somebody pointed out that the gentleman who was first, I can't see him. Where are you? Did you want to come up and make another comment? Because you started to come up and I told you to...
This correction, Donald.
Did you want to add another comment?
No.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Tessie. Or Mr. Franco, whoever.
I just wanted to make one final comment and I don't want to take too much time because I've already had a lot of time and I appreciate that. But I, over the last three or four days, have had calls and emails sent to me by folks who had received these blast emails that were sent literally to hundreds, maybe over a thousand people. Well, in any case, I've had people call me and say, "How, you know, you're known for your interest in historic preservation. How could you be tearing down the historic Harbor House Inn?" And I've had other folks call and say, "Why would you even propose building a 16-car carport on that property?" And my 14-year-old son was approached at school by two kids and said that his parents told them that we were going to be tearing down the wonderful old inn down in Old Greenwich. And I actually even had a call last night from my father-in-law, who lives in Cleveland, who grew up just down Shore Road. But this just shows you the power of the Internet. Pardon me?
This is a mixed audience here.
Yeah, no, no.
Before you say what your father-in-law said to you.
No, no, no. Well, he said, he grew up on Shore Road, down the road, and he goes, "How could you possibly be tearing down the Harbor House?" And so I have had to explain to so many people that that is such a twisted view of what we're proposing to do. And I have to say that I believe that it came from this petition circulated because I think there were... I think it was perhaps not intentionally done, but it was, I think it was a very much of a disinformation disseminator in town. And I think that the clearest indication of that can be found in the petition itself. And I'm just going to read to you from some of the comments. And there weren't that many comments, so I'm going to read to you from a significant portion of the comments. Jamie Clark of Old Greenwich wrote, "The town crosses the line when they permit the teardown of an old and picturesque historic inn in replacement with a condominium complex. Further, the idea of grandfathering a footprint to circumvent zoning should not be permitted. I'm happy to join any movement to prevent this from happening and I will protest as loudly as I can." Mackenzie Reed of Old Greenwich wrote, "The town does cross the line when they permit the teardown of a beautiful and historic building in replacement with a complex that doesn't fit with the neighborhood while boasting a huge carport, 16 spaces and covered walkways. The idea of grandfathering a footprint should not be permitted." Collette Chestnut of Old Greenwich wrote, "I agree with the petition. It would be a shame to lose such a charming structure in Old Greenwich." Etienne Lamorese of Cosco wrote, "The town of Greenwich needs to save the soul and look of New England charming architecture and protect the neighborhood from condo units that do not belong in this place." Danavoid of Stanford wrote, "Stop destroying this beautiful village."
We get your point.
I could go on and on. My point is that, you know, I don't think a lot of the people that signed that petition really understood the facts of this case, which is, I think, evidenced very clearly by the calls that I got from people who had received them, from the comments that were made to my children, from what my father-in-law said from Cleveland and from the comments in the petition itself. I think it clearly implied that we were going to be tearing down this building and building some giant apartment complex in the site and that's obviously not our plan or our intent. So in any case, I'm just going to end and just ask you to please... You know, I think that we're doing a plan that will be very respectful and valuable for the community and will preserve the building and I hope that you'll approve it.
I think it's clear that there are very strong opinions either way. And some of the strong opinions that are against the construction are certainly real.
This is true.
And not made up or, if you will, confused or unenlightened. I do have one criticism that if it's true, that they didn't see your latest plans until Thursday. And that's a fair criticism because, and I think you ought to show them the plan right after this meeting.
Well, I would be happy to and we actually had the plans...
I think you ought to invite that.
Well, we will invite that. And I will tell you that we did work very hard with the neighbors. We had multiple meetings, including a meeting on Sunday night, the Tuesday before our last meeting. Because two of the people who passed this around had specific requests for us. One asked us to remove the balcony. Another asked us to provide substantial landscaping along Shore Road. And we did that and on Sunday night with a group of probably a dozen neighbors, I said, "We're making these changes because you've asked us to make them and can I have your support for the project?" And they told me, "Yes, you've earned it. You have my support." So I have to tell you that I was very surprised, disappointed, when we came here on Tuesday night and those same people got up and I felt, you know...
We don't want to...
So my point is, I'm not... I wasn't... The first thing I was not planning on doing was running out and meeting with them to discuss our changes.
Did you want to say anything else?
Yeah.
Just really very briefly, and that is, we do appreciate all the comments from everyone. That's why we scrambled as much as we could during the period allowed by the commission and the constraints under Mr... I almost said Russo again. Mr. Franco's contract. No intent to avoid speaking to people. It was a question as Mr. Franco pointed out of working with the professionals to get it done and address the articulated concerns from the last hearing. And I think a magnificent job's been done. We don't diminish the fact that there are certain... There is a certain segment of the population in the area that is against the project for the reasons articulated. There's also a significant portion of the residents of the area who are in favor of this project or at the worst case, neutral. We've all been, literally all of us have been at hearings where neighbor opposition is articulated and present. You don't see that here. You didn't see a big applause meter here. And I think that's important because it comes down to that very issue and it's why I'm bringing it up. For you, because it's absolutely correct. It's absolutely correct what Mr. Fauzor stated. This is a subjective analysis at the end of the day that you get paid big bucks for to determine whether or not this application in and of itself presents a new use of this property that is more detrimental than the existing use. I think the statistical information without question supports the application. There's no question that traffic is a non-issue. It absolutely is. Statistically speaking, we were very well aware of the differences, but the practical... Whether or not there's families, there are families there or empty nesters there, you simply don't produce that much traffic from residential uses. And finally, just one final point, and it simply comes down to the issue of, if you will, the wild card, the preservation factor here. That, to me, because it's not only the issue of whether or not you are presenting a more detrimental use, you also have to take into account, as noted, the site plan standards and the special permit standards, which speak loudly to the concept of looking at what's being proposed versus the existing use, looking what's happening with the land, stormwater management, reduction of impervious surface, an overall residential character use versus a business use. With that, thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner, anybody else want to say anything?
I do. I would like to ask Mr. Franco a couple more questions.
Mr. Franco?
Yeah. Mr. Franco, as we learned tonight that that port cochere, I guess is the term, was original to this building, there are a couple of pieces like that. So that, to me, looks like a piece of a restoration. The various balconies and now in this last iteration, new substantial-sized terraces, I don't think these things have anything to do with this architecture. I don't think those balconies, I don't think the terraces with the fencing around them, I don't think that has anything to do with this architecture. Does it?
Well, I will tell you that our intention with regard to the new quote, "terraces" over the carports, was really not to add terraces. The intention was to get the carports underground. I think it was even your suggestion, Mrs. Ramar, at the last meeting, that we might look into that, which was actually a very brilliant suggestion in a lot of ways. Not to... I'm not trying to butter you up, but it really was. You know, we were very pleased with what we were able to do with that. So that creates the question about what do you do, you know, above that? Because we wanted to keep them to six and a half feet so that they wouldn't... They would run right along the foundation line with the arches, so it really becomes invisible. A flat roof on top of it is the obvious solution to keep it low.
I have no quarrel with everything till you get to the fencing. And I certainly think flat roofs can just be, A, left alone or made into a rain garden, but not a terrace for exterior living in a location where your concept, your selling point is that you are keeping a very old building. Our actually conversion statute 141 doesn't talk about historic preservation, I don't think at all. It just talks about less detriment. So... But you recognize and we recognize the significance of historic preservation. But if that's what this plan is, then that's what it ought to be. And I think all of these terraces have nothing to do with this architecture. They weren't ever there. They're for upscale condominium living and they're not about historical preservation at all.
Well, the way I would comment to that is that in addition to historic preservation, this is also adaptive reuse. And that means that the building needs to be adapted so that it becomes a functional and well-functioning building for today as well. So we are not trying to do a museum quality... We're not trying to create a museum. Our intention is to restore the building, to preserve the building, in other words, to keep it from getting destroyed and to make it as much like the beautiful original building that it was, but also have it function for today. So aside from the two porches that are over the carports, which we didn't really seek, to be quite honest, but they became a natural outgrowth of putting the four parking spaces down below, there are two... There are three other porches that are on the second floor and that are built into the roof line, so they are not big porches that are people... People are going to be hanging off of with bikinis. I think that's absurd. What they are is an opportunity for the people that live there to open their doors if they're sitting in their living room and experience the inside and outside.
I think the smaller balcony that is on the one unit is what functionally does that. That's what I believe you call a Juliet balcony.
Well, a Juliet balcony means you have French doors and you open them, but there's a rail right there, so there's really not even an opportunity to step out. That's better than nothing, but really is it's... If I drive around Old Greenwich, there are... Every other new house that I look at has a small second-floor balcony and the reason is people like to open their doors and experience. They might want to step out and see what the weather's like and then step back in. They might want to leave them open. It really isn't... I think it's consistent with the architecture and I think it's a way to adapt the architecture so that it's useful for the way people want to live today. So we're not trying to create a museum here. We're trying to be true to the historic structure and I think that we're very, very true to the historic structure, the windows, the doors. There's not a... There's all of the dormers, the entire structure. Now, and in terms of the port cochere, because you asked about that, we talked about that specifically with the Historic District Commission because I asked at the commission, I said, "Explain the reason that we had eliminated it was it didn't make sense anymore because we had eliminated the driveway." And a port cochere by definition is an area where people drop off in cars and the like in a covered area. And I said, "Do you think it's a problem if we eliminate that?" And the Historic District Commission said, "No, that's really not a problem because you're changing the use of the front of the property. You're getting rid of the driveway and the turnaround." So a port cochere doesn't make any sense to stick out over a lawn. It's just bulk of the building that doesn't make any sense anymore. What we did do in our design was that we followed the exact lines of the port cochere. So if you were looking at this building from the front, it would look exactly the same as it did today because the port cochere protrudes with that exact same roof line. So we followed the exact same roof line so that at least on a front view, the building will look the same. Of course, on the side view, it wouldn't look the same because it doesn't protrude out nearly as far. So we've done our best to follow the historical lines, but it doesn't make sense to have a port cochere out over a... You know, not over a driveway.
Let me ask you a question regarding these, whatever they're called, roofs of the...
These here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Since they are accessed only through the apartments, in other words, there's no massing or group of people that's not open to the public, it's just open to those two units.
No, this one is accessible by this door here.
Yes.
Only?
The only way to get to it is through somebody's unit.
Correct.
Okay. It is a rather large space and I don't think it's a very pleasant space particularly if you're living in the unit and looking out at an asphalt roof. So the suggestion raised, is it possible to turn that into a green roof, perhaps then be able to eliminate the railings or pull them back closer to the building and perhaps the outer third or one-half of that all is turned to green and that any railings to prevent somebody from going over it is back in off the face of the building?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea and it's absolutely possible. We were not looking to create large, you know, terraces.
I don't think they'd be very pleasant in a building there.
I would agree with that. I think one thing that we could do is eliminate this side alt. Each of them are two-bays large, so one thing we could do is eliminate the rail completely on one side and maybe do a green roof or something like that. And I think the suggestion of pulling it back so that it's not as large is a very good one. I'd be happy to do that.
Okay. We've just earned a day's pay or an evening's pay.
So to clarify, there would be a portion of it that would be a green roof and a portion would be pulled back? If you could just explain what the changes you're proposing to make.
Okay, so each of these two roofs is accessible by one unit and one door in one unit. So this door lines up with this, you know, carport, if you will. And so we could eliminate this one, the rail, and so there... And make that side of it a green roof.
So the rail, excuse me, sorry, would head back towards the house at that point?
Go back, yeah.
It's 20 feet away from the house.
Yeah, the other thing...
It's 10 feet.
Yeah, exactly. And then the other suggestion that Mr. Maitland made is that we would pull this back because right now it comes out 20 feet because it's the length of the carport, so we'd be happy to pull that back to 10 feet.
And then the other side of it would be a green roof?
Here and here, yeah.
Right.
And we could do the same thing on this one.
Got it. Okay.
I think that's actually an excellent suggestion.
We all set? Anything else?
No.
What?
I would like to go back to this HO conversation, which we discussed in our briefing yesterday. I don't know if you had anybody there, but the... I start with the fact that this is a single-family zoned area of town. So that is the expectation of the neighborhood and that is the design from a zoning standpoint. So to put an R6 kind of housing into this zone is very troubling to me and inconsistent with our zoning plan for this area. And so when we look to historic overlay and what our philosophy or our public policy is expressed in that reg is exactly as this gentleman was speaking about earlier, that we could potentially, under historic overlay, that it would be three units. I think that's a reflection of the value of keeping the historic building and what you're prepared to do from a regulatory scheme concept. And it seems much more in keeping. It's worth doing three condominiums to preserve the building, but when you get to six, this is such a distortion of the scheme for this part of the town from a zoning standpoint. It's very troubling. I think that when you start looking at what we're supposed to be considering here is the under 615 three, and I'm just going to read from this, though I'm not distorting the language. Sorry. I can't see anything. I'm sorry, I'm being slow because I have substitute glasses on that I can't really see too much through. Number three... No, sorry. Let me see. See. No, it's under 15, sorry. Anyway, it speaks to the effect on the value of real estate in the neighborhood, as a consideration on the site plan, and, under 617, I can't read it, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm, I'm in the wrong place entirely, that's why. Under 617, we'll get there, under the standards, not materially adversely affect the adjacent areas located within the closest proximity to the use. I, I think that what we are hearing from this neighborhood, and I'm convinced that a great many of the letters we received are heartfelt, we've had an enormous public audience here in opposition, and I think these people care about our community, and they care about historic preservation. And I think that this, this proposal has deep concerns for this neighborhood.
Well, I can appreciate that, and I would point out, however, that there are many in the neighborhood that support this, including the two adjacent neighbors, and a number of other neighbors, from Kiophrum, which is down at the end, from Meadow, which is down at the end, from Northhorn, and from Shore Road. And I would also just reply that we're not talking about putting a multi-family unit in a neighborhood where something that's far less conforming doesn't already exist. There's a hotel there. There's a 23-room hotel, it's got a 2,000-square-foot conference center, it's got a, a commercial kitchen, and a dining room, and yes, they may only be serving cereal today, and I don't know whether that's true or not, but certainly, you know, a more vibrant end could be doing something much more impactful than that.
I don't think that your speculation about what this could be is relevant or something we can consider. The history of it, I have lived here 40 years, I bike ride past that property three times a week, and I see that parking lot, and based upon what I see in that parking lot, which is emptier than full over a very large number of years, this, a B&amp;B in a neighborhood is not the same thing as a motel seven, motel eight, whatever.
Well, and I think that's an important distinction, because this is not someone's house, where they're renting out a couple of rooms, which is what comes to mind when we talk about bed and breakfast also, often. This is a 23-room hotel, and it's got a commercial kitchen and a restaurant, and it's got a conference center, so it's not a little quiet.
Not licensed as a restaurant.
I don't want to have this turn into an opinion versus another opinion. This is not the-
Well, I, I'm not an expert on the definition of license.
You have an opinion, you know, that's fine, but I don't, I don't want to have an, I don't want to have a debate here at this time, this is not correct. Okay? Any other commissioners want to say anything? Anybody else want to say anything?
No.
Okay. Shall we close?
Yes.
Everybody in favor of closing? Anybody opposed? Okay, we'll close.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to the next subject, people.
Should we take a break?
Well, after the next one, because this could be. The, the next subject is 1191 East Putnam Avenue.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission again. Chip Haslam from Johnson Haslam and Hoagman for the applicant. With me is Lou DeLeo, who is the architect, John Giancollo, the engineer.
Chairman, there's too much talking here in the area.
Folks, folks, would you please step outside? Folks?
If you want to confirm that.
With me tonight is Lou DeLeo, who's the architect behind the board, John Giancollo, the engineer, Adam Jacobson is the principal of Alpha Realty, as well as the Pet Pantry, and my son, who's assisting tonight. I want to, I think you really wanted to focus on the operations, proposed operations, and how it related to other operations of Pet Pantry of similar size, and so Adam's prepared to address that, and we have a handout for you, too, to go through that. But before I do that, I just want to cover a couple of small points, and then, because I think that's really what you want to focus on. So we did give it back to, we went to ARC a couple of weeks ago, and they approved the landscape plan, they made some recommendations about the lighting, which we've incorporated, we'll take care of, and they've asked us to better integrate the elements of the architecture, which we are working on, and that will be done as well. So we'll go back to ARC, and hopefully, the next time, we'll get approval for them, for the, the rest of those remaining items. Mr. Mackey asked for a demo plan, which we just got to you today, but I think your indication was as long as we had it prior to going in for a permit, but we did present it, and hopefully that's acceptable. Okay. Those plans submitted earlier today. There we go. So there, there's a demo set in there, in other words, for your approval. Also, you asked for a copy of a letter from Mr. Spazano, who's the neighbor behind the property with regard to the trees, and his support of the trees, and-
My name's Adam Jacobson, I'm a principal at Alpha Realty and Pet Pantry Warehouse. In relation to the question, these square footages, if you were to compare Rye and 1191, they are almost identical, at around 3,500 square feet, give or take. The Wilton store is actually a 4,000-square-foot space, so it's slightly larger, and Greenwich is somewhere around 12,000 square feet.
Not very good return on 12,000 square feet, on the number of stops, anyway.
I guess that depends on the average ticket, but-
I guess it does. I guess it'd be a sell enough. Special fish or something.
Yeah.
So, the Rye one is comparable in square footage to this one?
It's going to be the closest in resemblance to it, that's why I put it, and the, the second closest would have been Wilton, which is slightly larger.
Right. Well, none of them exceeded the 16 spaces that I could see.
No.
Okay.
Are there, any other questions that the Commission has for myself or any of the team?
I had a question on the same line, so, there are, the numbers for the existing Greenwich location are not in here, is that right? Am I correct about that?
When you say the numbers, the total units that are, sales units are here?
They are.
It's the blue column on the last page?
Last page.
Oh, 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 separate page, that's right, okay, I see.
And the sales by hour summary is also the blue column.
Oh. So, the, well, what I had when I was reviewing this today was the three columns from the other stores.
Yes, because we don't, this goes off of their billing records, obviously, and because we don't, we haven't opened yet at 1191, we wouldn't have those, so it's just-
No, 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 of course you wouldn't, but I, I was expecting to see records from the existing Greenwich location, which on this page, which are not, not on this page.
Yes, yes, it is.
They're on this.
Bottom, yeah, it's on that one.
Or on this, but-
There's, there's actually, it's on two pages, so you'll see, the bottom of this page, the blue column is Greenwich, existing Greenwich, and on this last page, the blue column is also existing Greenwich.
But what is that, what is that last page? I don't understand the significance of that one.
This was, there was a specific question, I believe, in the last hearing, as to the difference in the inventory amount. So, this is particularly the actual units of individual items. So if you look at Greenwich in its current iteration, it has approximately 69,000 items in the store. In the new location, I'm, I'm sorry, in the current locations, that would be more comparable to it, there's a decrease of about 43,000 units, to show that, the comparison and scale, I believe that was a question that was asked the last time.
I thought, I thought it was remarkable that you were able to, that you can pull this off of data. I mean, it's enormously helpful. But the, the number of stops at the three other shops seem to be about a third of what they are in the present Greenwich location. Does that sound right to you?
Uh, it could be, yeah, easily a third, maybe even less than that, maybe a quarter of, yeah.
Right, right. So, would I be correct in assuming that at the present Greenwich location, you're looking at stops that are more in the nature, in the peak periods, something like, uh?
That are far greater.
Far greater.
Yes, because of the sheer scale difference and the amount of inventory that we have to offer. These smaller locations, I, probably in my representation, are more like convenience stores. They're, they're much more slimmed down, more defined versions of higher necessity items.
Right.
So that actually accelerates the shopping experience. People don't linger as long, because there's less to buy. You come in, get what you need, and you walk your way out.
Right, right. It, it was just that, you know, this Pet Pantry in downtown Greenwich services this community, and there are not many other supply places for pets in this town. I mean, I think the nearest one that are in town, at, at the end of town where this is going, this new one is going to be, is in Stamford and kind of off Exeter.
Well, there, there's Choice Pet at Whole Foods Shopping, but, you know, in, in reality, unfortunately for our type of business, the internet is taking a good portion of retail away from retail, so.
Thank you.
Could you tell me, just again, I noticed on the last sheet, you have a Larchmont store, is that roughly the same size?
Uh, that one was slightly smaller. That one's about 3,000 square feet. So I, I took the three smallest units on the last one, just to show the comparison of the amount of inventory that's in those stores.
Could, since it's, this chart that has the three?
Yeah, that was a sales by hour report.
Sales by hour, what, there is the time, and then there's one column which says HR?
That's hour. Hour? It's just a, I think it's redundant.
Apparently.
Yeah.
Okay. And then the transactions number or the number of sales that took place?
Correct.
Thank you.
It just, and when it, the report spit out the hours, it didn't have an hour range, so I put the range next to it.
All right. One, the other, the other observation I think that's worth making is there's been a very busy restaurant in there with a horrific parking problem, and this is far less troublesome usage than for the neighborhood.
I think it'll be much quieter, and I think when we had conversations with some of the neighboring residents, I think they understand that as well.
When, when you went before ARC, the Architectural Review?
Yes.
They were not happy, I think, is what I understand from the staff report. Are you amenable to going back and getting some sort of solution to the concerns that they raised, so that we could, if we were to go ahead with this, we could make that a requirement?
I, my takeaway wasn't that they were unhappy with it, I think they just felt that, that there were certain elements of the building that, while they stood alone, okay, they weren't necessarily communicating, and could we do that?
They didn't speak the same vocabulary.
I think that was more or less what they're saying. So I think we're going to have to do a little Esperanto or something.
So would you be all right with, what?
He already said he was going back.
Okay, yeah, okay.
We're going back, and, and I think the staff recommendation is, if, if you could close it and make it conditional on that, but again, whatever your policy might be in this particular situation, but I think we'll be able to address them quite easily.
One of the changes that, that you did make was you added the turning radius of the, the vehicle that would be dropping off this, the product and whatnot.
Right.
Perhaps the engineer could just go through that a little bit, because it was routed to our engineering division, but we, I don't believe we've received comments on that, just based on the timing. So if, if, just for the record, if you could explain how that vehicle would work, and how, obviously, there would be no unloading on East Putnam Avenue of any products whatsoever?
Sure.
It would all be done on-site?
John Giancollo, the engineer, will address that.
Should I repeat that, I guess? John Giancollo, engineer and surveyor with Putnam &amp; Kirby LLC. The turning ratios that you see are the latest ASHTO, single-unit vehicle, which would be fire truck, or delivery truck, or garbage truck.
Hold the phone a little closer.
Sorry, oh, sorry. Or a garbage truck. And the, the outline of the, the orange lines on either side is the path of the overhang of the vehicle as it goes around the curves.
They can make a left-hand turn when they're exiting?
Yes. Well, we show the left-hand turn here, and then the right, oh, sorry, left-hand turn here, and the right turn there.
Okay.
Yeah. That's what the arrows are for, and that's why, they were color-coded green and orange, so you could see the difference.
And presumably, all of those deliveries would not, would be coordinated with the owner, so they don't happen at peak times, and-
Yeah, I would assume that, yeah. I mean, I wouldn't want a garbage truck showing up at-
Well, I'm not so much concerned about the garbage truck, because I assume they got themselves sorted out, but the delivery, the delivery vehicles, because I think that would-
The answer's yes.
Thank you. For the record, it's important that we get that established.
Okay. Any other comments by the Commission?
Oh, there, there is one slight correction, and I should point it out. We did reduce the impervious coverage to 74.9, but there was an oversight in the drafting. It says 75.5 on the plan, we will resubmit that plan.
So that it's 74.9?
It actually is 74.9. What we did was we moved this curb westward about 1.2 feet, and that gave us the additional coverage.
And that, the area in the front, the walkway in the front?
Oh, yeah, that was corrected also.
That was corrected, too?
That's correct.
And so, with all of those corrections, it's 74.9?
That's correct also.
Thank you.
Any comments from the public? Are we all set to close, people? Are we all set to close?
Quickly, I'm, to other, you're cognizant of the sewer comments, because we'll-
Yes. I think that's the only engineering comment that we have looked into.
And then the, the, I don't know, we'll say, conservation would like to see more native species, so we'll just throw that in.
And, I'm sorry, just one question, the planters, was that also fixed on the information?
Yes, they're, right, they're open in the bottom, that's not, so they can be included.
Okay, thank you, we close.
Thank you, thank you.
Let's take a 10-minute break.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, I'm Bill Robinson. Some of you may recognize me from my prior service, or to the Town of Greenwich, as a selectman, and as a member of the Board of Estimate and Taxation.
Could you raise that a little bit?
Certainly. And I say that, in justification, and that I recognize the time and energy you people put in, in doing what you do for the town. But, I'm here tonight as the, the better half of Giselle Nicolet, and Giselle has asked me to emphasize some points on this application. First of all, we believe it's a confirmation, or just affirmation, of the current existing long-term use of this piece of property as a two-family house. As long as anybody can remember, to include Giselle's acquisition of the property, it has been a two-family house, and I think this is supported by the fact that today, I think you should have received copies of 1990 and 1970's tax assessor's cards that indicate that it is a two-family house, and with two kitchens, two baths. The current card, for some reason, it's been dropped, and this caused the point of confusion, where and how do you confirm that, or justify that it is a two-family house? I think a description of the property is in order. It is on Oak Ridge Street, it's a .23-acre piece of property, which is one of the bigger lots on this street. It has a deep, level front yard, big enough for kids to play on, and this is probably the only one on this street. There's parking on site for four cars, one of those in a garage. Always has been, that anybody can remember. There's a six-foot hedge and a six-foot fence along one piece of property line, which borders a 30 residential unit complex. There's a hedge running across, a five-foot hedge running across the front of the property, these are private hedges, and then a, a six-foot hedge, a five-foot hedge running along the right side of the piece of property. The house itself sits well back, it's about 72 feet from the street. The house is more than 100 years old, the original, and it's in, for the most part, in its original configuration, with the exception of probably an enclosed front porch, which was put on in 1948. an enclosed front porch, which was put on in 1948. The parcel has about 64% of green space, and it is the greenest aesthetically, most pleasing parcel on Oak Ridge Street, if you've ever been on that street. The street contains 33 parcels of land with residential structures on them. Four of those are six-family houses. Two of those parcels are four-family houses. Five are three-family houses. 18 of those parcels are two-family houses, and only four are one-family houses. There is no vacant land and no commercial property, according to the tax records, on Oak Ridge Street. Number of properties with garages is 13. There's 26 available parking garage spaces, and out of those 26, only eight are actively used garages. And that's because of disrepair, storage, et cetera, and those are only on three pieces of parcels. And I'd also like to point out that the number of properties on the street would, turnaround capabilities on them, there's only 11. That's about a third. So this, this piece of property, I know there were some comments about backing out on the street, but this is pretty much the norm for this street. Parking, for the most part, is on-street. This parcel in itself has adequate parking, and is actually never used, at least with the current owner, that goes back to about 1984, has never availed itself of parking on the street. So I think she's been a very good piece of aesthetically beautiful property, and keeping in nature with the Town of Greenwich. Most of the yards do, are, have very little front yard space, and do not have nearly as much green space as this. I know there's been a lot of concern about the one space that needs to, or the requirement that there be one, one space per living unit in it, under a garage, but there, since there is only one garage on this space, it would create somewhat of a hardship in expanding that garage, or relocate, or locating another one on the property to accommodate that, that requirement, because it would, in effect, destroy the aesthetic nature of what's there. It would just destroy the streetscape. The property, as I said, is level, about mid-property. It rises to the ridge that's behind the property, and that, that parallels the street, and that ridge was, used to be covered with oak years ago, and that's how the name Oak Ridge Street came about. With that, I'll entertain any questions that you have.
Microphone, please.
I mean, we were looking for, since this is a confirmation, or asking for a confirmation of a two-family dwelling, and we had some information that it was, but I think the additional information provided to us this evening, that in fact, during the '70s and up through the '90s and so forth, it was. We have the adjacent, we have the cards from the assessor's office. So whatever happened, I believe, is a technical error, and it seems like there is more evidence now been produced that is, this shows it to be a two-family dwelling in the past.
I think there was, Mr. Seal went and located a permit, a building department permit, which I don't know all the details of from the '60s. Is that something you could cover?
When I, when we did the research today, yes, we found a building permit from the 1960s that was to add dormers and do kind of some extensive work to the house, just kind of bringing it up probably more, a little bit more up-to-date, but it was primarily focusing on that top floor. And it did indicate that it was a single family at that time. But as evidenced by the tax cards that we have to us tonight, and I think by the 1970s, the tax department noted it as a two-family. That continued through the '90s, and talking to the assessor's office, they did say that in the most recent tax card, they had probably hired that out to a private company to do the revaluation for the tax assessor's office. And at that time, they, and a lot of those people that get hired out don't go into the homes, so they probably just looked at it, thought that it was a single family, and noted it as such. Although you do notice, in the lower-left-hand corner of the tax card, it does note two doorbells, that they had noted at that time.
Two what, I'm sorry?
Two doorbells. Also, there was a?
Bob, do you have a copy of that building permit?
No, I didn't actually make a copy of that one.
Do you know the number?
Relevant.
Anything about?
It was an E. It's, it's available in the building department records room. There were two different permits for that property, one from, I believe, the '40s, and then one from the '60s. I think the '40s was to enclose the porch, or something along those lines.
That's right.
The 2002 electrical permit that was pulled, I talked to the building department about that, because that 2002 permit was to do a second meter, and on the back page of this, it notes that it's a change from, you know, 100 amp to 200 amp service, and add a meter to, a meter pan, one for each living unit, two units, underlined, exclamation points, all that good stuff. Building department said that they never questioned these, because at that time, in 2002, it was as of right in the R6 zone, and it would not have required zoning sign-off. It was, if it was three units, they would have required zoning sign-off. So it was at that time that the building department took it as evidence that it was already a two-family.
The, the, my concern is that the, the structure was, the last time it was permitted, a one-family house, and with one kitchen, and that one has to conclude that it is, if it is now a two-family, there was a variety of work done to this building, which had no permit and no CO. And the status that it has legally, in terms of building permits, is as a one-family.
I disagree with that.
I'm not sure. Well, so that's the discussion.
Just because the latest building permit was for two meters, which clearly stated two families.
But there's, there are illegal, there are?
But that's not our charge.
There's work, there's work that's been done in this building with no permit and no COs, and if we, if we take this as a valid two-family, I think that we are putting the next buyer at risk, in terms of work that's never been inspected. We have no idea what was done, and whether it was?
Well, the purview of the Planning and Zoning Commission is whether, when you look at two-family units, is in relation to 698, 615, and 617. The comments that you're referring to are really more building code and building official issues. So the point is, is well-taken, though, that, that it is in the applicant's best interest, and in the town's best interest, to make sure that the building is properly permitted. However, as it relates to the use question, that's under the purview of the Planning and Zoning Commission, as it relates to 615 and 617 and 698.
But it's so clear that the, that the tax assessor's cards, that we didn't have the advantage of the other, at the briefing yesterday, clearly calls out on the 1990s cards, multifamily, residential dwelling, two kitchens. So, I mean, I think that it's, I think as the town planner says, if there's a zoning, if there's a building department violation, that's not our?
So you're saying that it's as of right, so they changed it to two families, and we are not to concern ourselves with how, and because it was as of right at that time, without any requirement to come before us, it's legal?
They would never have come before us for a two-family dwelling in the 1990s.
To a conversion to a two-family.
They would never come before us if it was as of right.
It's as of right, right.
So therefore, the commission would never have had anything to do with it back in the '90s.
Okay, I make those observations about the reasons we have building permits and COs, that there was clearly work done on this building without?
Well, if I? That's not a conclusion I think you can reach. We just can't?
Without a permit or approval.
If it's been done by the building department only, not by us.
I think, I think you're both right here, because, because Mr. Mill, you're absolutely right, that the Planning and Zoning Commission, at that time, would not have required an application for a conversion to two-family. However, that doesn't mean that, when we say as of right, that anyone can just start putting in kitchens and things of that nature. You do need to get permits, and they do need, the structure needs to be CO'd from the building department. So to Mrs. Raymer's point, was that, or was that not done? And to follow through on Mr. Seal's research here, once the town has, in some sort of documentation or CO has, has agreed that it is a two-family, there's municipal stopple issues, where we can't then go back on that, particularly since the purview of this commission is from a use standpoint, under, under the sections of the regulations that we're referring to, and since we didn't require approval at that time, we have to go with what the facts are, essentially.
Any other comments from the commissioners?
I just want to clarify the issue that the parking and the turning radius, and how you get in and out of the place. So?
To get in and out of the place, you have to pull in and back out. There is no turnabout on the property, but that is true for more than the majority of the rest of the properties on that street.
It seems to me that if you had two in a garage, as opposed to just one, and you moved, so you'd only have two in the front yard, it would go a great distance into regularizing the parking issue in the front.
I understand that, but it's a one-car garage, it's impossible to get a second one in. That should be reflected on the landscape improvement plan that you received from Rosoli Engineering. And there's only about four pieces of property on the whole street that actually meet the required number of spaces.
Amazing.
Peter?
Yes.
This is coming down to you from, I'm sorry. I'm just handing Mr. Levy a piece of paper that's coming his way from the town planner.
There's a photograph.
What's being passed, passed along, just for the purpose of the?
It seems to me like there's, as you were saying, there's plenty of open space, and if you, if you build a, make a two-car garage, you'd have gone a great deal to make the parking?
If the requirement to build a two-car garage is imposed, it would create a hardship. It could be done, but literally, if you look at the topography of the land and the layout of the buildings, you would have to put it in the front yard, or behind the front 25-foot setback. I think that would totally destroy the landscape, if you see any pictures of the front of that house.
I understand.
Just for the sake of the record, what was being passed along before was an aerial photograph from the town GIS. That's what was being referred to.
I think it would, yeah, it would be, it would really be a disservice to the aesthetics of that street. That's the house in the center. That has the largest green space, open space on the street.
Well, I, I would say that as far, my aesthetic would be to have fewer cars in the front yard, and it's just a?
To put them behind the house would mean that you would have to start digging out the ridge that actually borders the, the property line. There's an office building behind, 30-unit development to the left, and a two-family house to the right.
It seems to me that you have plenty of property back there, and yes, you would have to cut a little bit, but?
But I think the trade-off, and we talked a little bit about it at the briefing yesterday, there are ways to do it, but you're going to be giving up green space for some additional asphalt, and I think that's?
Well, it has plenty of green space. It has plenty of green space.
I guess we can have that discussion.
Okay. Any questions? Any comments from the public? Yes, ma'am.
Not that tall. I'm Elsie Pecorin. I've been in? I'm Elsie Pecorin, and I've been in real estate in this town for over 30 years. This particular property, I think we're losing fact of, is that Ms. Nicolet's family has owned this since 1972, and her family used it as a two-family. It was always, continued to be used as a two-family. In the '70s, when they had it, it was a two-family, as far as the records were concerned, and Ms. Nicolet has never been notified that it wasn't a two-family. So I think this puts it as a hardship, since it's been continual use. So that's what I'd like to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Shall we close on this one, guys?
Yes.
Okay. Close. Okay. Number 50 on North Street, final site plan and special permit.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Bruce Cohen, representing the applicants. The applicants are Mr. and Mrs. Brian Hurst, who own a vacant parcel at 2, 487 North Street in Greenwich. And the reason that we're before you tonight is because the Hursts require a special permit in order to build their proposed house, which is over 150,000 cubic feet in volume. I think the genesis of this parcel is of some interest. You may remember in 2008 approving on this parcel, a five-lot, two-acre subdivision, properties located in the R82 zone. From that approval, neighbors along Flagler Drive took an appeal to court. That court was, a case was finally settled, and the settlement involved a reduction in the number of lots from five to three, and also the establishment of a 75-foot buffer zone between this lot and Flagler Drive. My clients purchased the expanded lot four and five, which constitute together almost five acres in the two-acre zone. Without, for zoning lot purposes, it's about 4.6 acres. The building that they're proposing to construct is shown in a copy of this town GIS plan. Again, I've shown their parcel in yellow. It's a large house, which is why Mr. and Mrs. Hurst bought a double-size parcel in this, in this two-acre zone. The, the new house complies with all applicable zoning requirements, including FAR, and including a green area. There's something over 80% of the parcel is going to be retained as green area. There's wetlands on the site, and so the applicants went to the Wetlands Agency and have been issued a wetlands permit. You've seen staff comments, and the engineering department has approved the stormwater management plan with several recommendations that can be accommodated before issuance of building permit, all of which are acceptable. There are some comments that were issued by Alexandra Mock, which I think I should address, and there are, let's see, I think four comments that require some response. The first comment has to do with the fact that there's some regrading required, and Ms. Mock believes correctly that the regrading is required because of shallow groundwater table, and the requirement for location of septic and stormwater detention systems. That's correct. And she also notes that the property is perpendicular to the grade, and why shouldn't it be horizontal to the grade, and what thoughts went into that, and have we looked into any alternatives? The matter of filling was a subject of a couple of hearings before the Wetlands Agency, and as a result of that, the applicants? of hearings before the wetlands agency. And as a result of that, the applicant has changed his plan so as to minimize the amount of filling, and yet still have the same aspect to their house. And the reason that the house is located that way is really in terms of the living space, the owners would like to have as many of their living spaces facing south and getting natural light, which is achievable this way. And also, the view of open area is to the south and would not be to the west where another house is located. She also recommends that the applicant submit a landscape plan, which they certainly intend to do and will do it as a part of the submission of a building permit application.
That, when that plan is submitted, since we would not see it, but you'd be willing to have the condition that the, that the staff and conservation department will sign off on it?
Yes.
And we'll include something about the trees, replacing trees?
Of course.
Well, they're going to sign off on the plan.
Yeah.
No, but we'll say something.
Have to know what it is that you're interested in seeing on the plan to-
Exactly. So we'll say something about trees and-
I expect that a property like this is going to be fully landscaped.
It will be, it'll be fully acceptable to everybody inside. She also notes that we have a lot of impervious surface. However, we do meet the only objective standard that I believe exists for impervious surface, and that, that is the green area. And we do exceed the requirement for green area. Also, I point out that the impervious surface issue is related to stormwater management. We've prepared a plan which the engineering department has found acceptable. And then finally, she says that, let's see, she'd like to consider a rain garden being more environmentally significant in the area which receives polluted runoff from the driveway. And I would point out that we do provide water quality treatment by installing or proposing to install two-foot-deep sumps and bell traps within all areas, all area drains serving the driveway and parking court. And again, when she refers to polluted runoff, this is, this is a residential use. It's not a commercial use. I think that we're satisfied. Certainly, our engineers and DPW are satisfied as to the treatment that this runoff will get. And so that's the end of my presentation. Subject to your question, Mr. Manley.
The only comment I had on it was that the CEO's comment had to do with the readability of the drawings.
Yes, he's right.
And mine goes a little bit further in that there's an indication on the framing plan of structured trusses in the attic. And then it goes to a part of it which I believe reads traditional, conventional framing. Then it goes back to the structural trusses again. That area, which is quote "conventionally framed," just happens to be in the area. The stair comes up into the attic. And I just think, and the reason it is questionable is that there is a cross-section cut through that area. And the cross-section doesn't show conventional framing. It shows trusses, which would lead one if they didn't sort of investigate it further. Therefore, my only point is just bringing it up and make the, I know the CEO will go over it in great detail before he gives you a zoning permit, so.
And we will give him readable worksheets.
Good.
Any comments? Anybody?
Yeah.
I would like to understand why. There seems to be an inconsistency in whether we require a landscape plan that we review before we approve, and why we do it to some and not to others. And it seems like an inconsistency in what we do. Is that part of the normal submission?
I don't think it is. If it is, I don't know where it is in the regulations. They're before us. They're, well, yeah, but it's-
I mean, we've looked at two landscape plans tonight. And I'm puzzled by the fact that on what I think is a pretty large project here, we haven't got one. And there are 23 trees coming down.
I understand that. But what I'm saying to you is I don't believe the regulations have a requirement that they submit a planting plan. We generally get them, and we assert, encourage them. And I feel if the applicant is willing to accept a condition that the planting plan will meet the scrutiny of the staff and of the conservation department that we're, that's it. We don't send these to architectural review, so we don't get that ability to comment on landscape.
Section 6-180 refers to the required screening and planting. And for a property like this one, which is in the RA4, the RA2 zone, is it RA2, right, in this particular instance? Right. The type of screening that's required is type B. And type B is the desired effect of this planting is partial visual screening and spatial separation. Plant materials should consist of evergreens, shade trees, and flowering trees with one tree for each 25 feet of yard length measured parallel to property line. Trees may be planted in groups. And for a property, for a property of this size, you know, one of the other key things is just making sure that the site is stabilized and that there, that there's not exposed soils and things of that nature. So it is, it is not inconsistent that we review those things prior to zone, as part of the zoning permit sign-off in the office in addition to the soil erosion control plan and all of those types of details.
But those parking, or those standards are such minimal standards.
Right.
And I just, there's no way that this property is going to be built to those minimum standards. I'm absolutely convinced of it.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Any comments from the public? Okay, we close. We're now at number 6, 564 North Street. Final resubdivision.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. For the record, Tom Hegney, on behalf of the Greens. This was actually part of a subdivision the commission approved back in 1980. The house-
Would you-
Which is located on the property was built in the 90s, but at that time, it was considered just one site, even though the subdivision map had been recorded in 1980. The open-space parcel as part of that subdivision was never put in a separate entity, and there's no declaration filed. It seems like they got the approval, recorded the map, and then nothing else was done. So we're proposing to not have three lots, but to have two. Parcel A, which would be 3.997 acres, which was purposely done because my clients don't want to see this one developed. This is the parcel with the house that they're selling. They want to make sure that it will remain just as one acre, and that's why it's less than four acres. One remain as one lot. That's why it's less than four acres. And Parcel B, which is bordered by Red Coat Lane, would be the second parcel. We've been to wetlands. Wetlands approved it. Health Department has approved the septic plan for Parcel B and a replacement plan for Parcel A. The existing septic system is shown as a series of boxes just to the east of the existing house. There's also a pool and a studio on the easterly side of the property.
I should note for the record that, I was just trying to indicate to Mr. Hegney, that I did receive an email from Denise Savageau, the conservation director, regarding the proposed change to the open space, and she is in favor of it. So we've spoken verbally, and she's now confirmed it in writing. So we'll just enter that into the record.
And we've made a number of changes to the declaration of restrictions in response to the comments by conservation.
Ms. Mock's memo to us wasn't as enthusiastic, so I'm very glad to have that because they're really not consistent with each other.
Anybody else comments?
Yeah, Mr. Hegney, one of the things we talked about is that part, an open space restoration plan.
I did speak with my clients about that. And it's really this area in the southeast corner. And I'll hand out some photographs to you that are showing this portion of the open space. This area here in one of the photographs, I'm standing in the driveway looking toward the east. And you can see that this is very heavily forested. There's actually a drainage corridor on the neighboring property in a very nice pond just to the south. And so creating this as your open space upland land makes a lot of sense for protection of that off-site wetland, just as we're creating the open space here to protect the wetland and pond on the north side. So what we're proposing is demarcation line and restoration for-
It was, that was what that magic word I was looking for.
So that the open space would be natural in its habitat.
So you're, there is a plan, and you're gonna, you're gonna give that to staff for how you're gonna do the restoration of the open space?
Yes.
And these large trees that are shown in the photograph will be within that open space?
They're within the open space parcel here. I would add that there is also a demarcation feature along here. There's also a stone wall in this area, right where the studio is located. But there's also a demarcation feature here with a split-rail fence. So it's really, we're just talking about in this area right here, the southeast corner.
So the proposed declaration state would state what about how this area would be maintained and/or-
Be maintained in a natural state with a demarcation feature indicating where it is located.
Okay. So with it being law now, it would just be allowed to, through succession-
Uh, no. I think my client intends to-
They're gonna replant, they're gonna plant it.
To replant native species.
Okay. Thank you.
Not just to let it grow wild.
Consider it go-messy.
Okay.
We haven't named it open space other than just open space. We had a few thoughts. Could, we could honor the person who would point out that we needed to put a name on the open space parcel. Or we could just call it the North Street/Red Coat Lane Association parcel, which is what we're calling the association that we're establishing to own the parcel.
But I think that's what it should be because that will have to be the name in the declaration.
Yeah, that's what we have in the declaration already. And so we'll just carry that over on the map itself.
Not to belabor this point, but I do have to just clarify. So when you're going to be planting with native species, it will then be allowed to grow up naturally, right?
Yes, correct.
Or is it, so you're not proposing some sort of man-eared environment? And I raise this because this has come up in other open space areas where there's a quote "planting plan." And it is, as a result, some neighbors feel that that is the plan that must be maintained in that, in that configuration forever. And that's just not how the natural environment works. And so I just want to make sure that we're clear that, yes, we will be planting it with native species, and then they'll be allowed to do their thing. And there'll be the normal language within the maintenance as to how that'll be handled through time.
Yes. And we did augment the language in the declaration to deal with invasive species.
Perfect. Okay.
Particularly in the pond, but also the bittersweet and other vines that grow and choke the trees.
Okay.
We unfortunately just got that, so we haven't.
I apologize for this question if somebody already asked it or mentioned it. But the, are the septic fields and the wells for the parcel number one shown on the subdivision map, resubdivision map?
Uh, no. They're not shown on the map because that's not something that would be shown on a record sheet. It is shown on the development plan. The well is located in this northwest corner, and the septic system is highlighted right here.
I thought you did get those on the, we don't get those on the record sheet?
That's not something, when I talk to the surveyors, that's not something that they would put on an A2 survey. That's something that they would be putting on the T2.
Okay. Then the next thing would be the drainage adjustment. That should be shown.
Uh, we did prepare and deliver to staff this afternoon a drainage adjustment. And that's just for this area right here.
But that should be shown on the map.
And we can just show that here.
And in speaking of that, the engineering gave us, gave you a list, wrote up a list of things to add to, of notes to be added to the subdivision map. I assume that you've gone through those and-
Uh, we did, and we added them and provided a copy of the plan with all of those notes added.
Again, I apologize. Somebody may have asked this. I was focusing on something else. Did we talk about the boulders to demarcate the-
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And just quickly, section 6-269 outlines what's required on the record sheet in the septic, showing the septic is not one of those things on the, on the record sheet. It's on the construction sheet, which is-
Right. It's on, which of course we have as part of our development sheet.
And just for the purpose of the record, Mr. Hegney, you've mentioned several components of this. But just as one complete answer, could you explain for the record the benefit of changing the open space from the existing park and playground to the configuration that you're proposing? You've mentioned several parts of it.
Yes. The open space parcel had been larger here, mainly just taking up the wetland area. The wetland approval takes care of protecting the wetlands and a buffer around it. So this area, even though it's not part of the open space, will be protected under the wetland approval. This area, however, is not. And by adding this corridor here, it protects that off-site wetland with upland reserve area.
And then you also mentioned this, the original resubdivi, subdivision, rather, was three lots, and this is two lots. So this is, in fact, a different configuration that has, that has less proposed development potential.
Well, that's correct. There had been a two-acre lot here, a two-acre lot here, and then another lot that came down with the pool and the studio as, as a separate lot. And my client is looking to reduce the amount of development on site.
Very good.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We all set? Comments from the public? Close.
Thank you.
Okay. 16, 16 Erlingham LLC.
Mr. Chairman?
There's an application to construct-
Chairman Heller? I'm recusing myself on this project.
Yes.
I'm recusing myself on this project.
Yeah, why?
I'm listed as agent on the application.
You're right, I'm sorry.
Listed as agent on the application.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. For the record, my name is Irene Ioffe, Principal of Granov Architects. I'm representing owner of 16 Erlingham Drive in Quiniers Farm. The presented- Sure. I don't, okay. The project, the presented project is, consists of the addition and renovation to existing residence, 15,000 square foot or so existing residence. We are doing an extensive addition to existing house, which consists of adding the entrance tower, stair tower, addition to the bedrooms, and four-car, new four-car garage on the front. Also, in the basement, we're adding some recreation rooms and doing some extensive renovation, as well as creating a pool cabana for, in the basement for the new pool. The existing house has an indoor pool, which we are removing from, from the space. And we renovated this, renovating the space, creating a big family room in place of the, the space that consists of existing indoor pool. We're also adding some patios and, and outdoor pool, and as well as the gazebo in place of the old gazebo. And we also added a stair tower that goes from, that helps to bring the members of, of the family down from the pool patio down to, to the grounds. The project was reviewed and approved by Wetland Agency and a review- The project was reviewed and approved by Wetland Agency, and reviewed by the town engineers and Health Department, and it was all recommended for approvals. I would like to address some of their comments that we heard from the agents, from you guys, and one of them was the stair tower height. There was a little bit of a confusion on our part because the tower was connected by the bridge, means of the bridge, to the residence, and we thought that this tower is supposed to be meeting the great plane of the house. But after we reviewed your comments, we looked at this again and consulted with our engineers, and we realized that we were supposed to use the great plane around the tower, which is actually lower than the great plane around the house. So we made some amendments to our design, and I would like to present it to you right now. When we realized that the tower was, the way we designed it with a roof over, was exceeding the height allowable for the accessory structures, we modified our design and we just took the roof off the tower, and we lowered the wall of the tower a little bit, so now it's completely compliant to the restriction that is allowed, a 25-foot height restriction which is allowed for the accessory buildings. The second comment was in regards to the kitchen, kitchenette, sorry, that is in a garage. Well, the existing kitchenette that exists over the existing garage is taken out, and we are creating a new kitchenette above the new garage. This kitchenette, we added some notes, as you could see on the second page of what we submitted to you, that it's only undercounter refrigerator and the bar sink, and no upper cabinets.
Sorry, what was the last word?
No upper cabinets.
No upper cabinets. So I...
One quick question. What did you, a simple thing where it's allowed, the total building is 27, 671, and you came in at 23, 7.
Correct.
Why'd you go over?
Under. We're under?
Is that incorrect?
No, the allowed number for the FAR square footage.
23, 7, and she's only, oh.
You're right. Ms. Reddick.
We're under.
Ms. Reddick, he's very old. He's very old.
Ms. Reddick, sorry.
You can look at something for ages, and then suddenly...
Sorry about that.
Yeah, that was the first thing we checked.
Can you explain to me what the purpose of this bridge stair is? I'm unfamiliar with this concept. It's just a decorative item?
Well, not exactly decorative, actually, because it's an extensive series of patios around the house. Let me just...
You can pick up your mic.
That's as large as you think. This is probably in the top five in granite size.
No, you should have seen the one earlier this...
What?
Okay.
The one earlier?
On this plan, it's probably better, you can see better. So this is the lower patio where the pool is, the new pool is. And in order to, in order for somebody to get down here, like to this area, it's a beautiful lawn and then beautiful grounds, and even like to go to...
Four acre, four acre, that would be eight, and his property is 11.46, so...
Right, but that's why I was saying, though, he's saying he's got three.
I'm saying he's got three.
Yes, he's saying he's got three. The plans show that's something that looks like it could be a third kitchen, but again...
It's called a pantry, but it looks like a kitchen because you've got the counters shown, you've got a range drawn in there as a...
Right.
Looks like a duck.
So do you, are you representing that you have a certificate of occupancy for all the structures on the property?
To my knowledge, yes. I mean, it's, I would have to assume that they, my clients couldn't have closed on the property if the title was messy and there was no COs that were open.
I don't accept that idea.
Oh, I've had people who won't close on houses because of COs.
Lots of people closed on houses with, that's not a legal foundation for evidence here, guys.
The W9011 does have a CO.
That's for the garage?
That's for the, actually, it was to renovate and alter the main living area of house, is how it began, and open balcony on second floor, floor layout minor changes, minor additional to the second and third floor, entry to the living room, and this is also the one that was modified to add the plumbing to it, to the garage and stuff like that, the gas for the apartment. So this one does have a CO.
But that's not the questionable one. The questionable one is the pantry, which is in the main house.
Well, the pantry...
It's in a barn, it's in one of the two...
Right, I guess they're calling in that permit the garage, they're calling, even though it's attached to the main house.
Yes.
Because this is physically attached, so...
The page 407 of our staff report says there is no existing or proposed kitchen in this building, referencing the barn renovations. So are you saying there is a kitchen?
I am.
He's interpreting, Mr. Maylin is interpreting what's called the pantry that's in the barn, he's interpreting it as a kitchen. There's no intention to use this as a kitchen. This is really, in speaking with the architect, this building, the barn, is kind of like a guesthouse, you know, it's for entertaining.
Have you seen it? Right, I mean, what is, does it meet the definition of a wet bar?
Unfortunately, I wasn't looking for, I was there for, you know, the septic system and the drainage and all that. I mean, that's...
He likes to step down.
I don't go hunting for kitchens, I'm sorry.
Can't we leave this open for two weeks and sort that out? Because I think we ought to tidy this up. It doesn't seem sensible.
Unless, unless you're willing to make it a wet bar, if it's not one already.
I hesitate to make that representation for my client without consulting with them.
What's the as-is condition of that? Is there, what's in there now?
I don't know, I've not been in that building to look in.
Don't we have an as-is drawing?
We do, and it shows basically a pantry with a cooktop. It's, according to the architect, it's dated. That's the best way to describe it.
It's drawn.
And they've got a CO.
I have nothing other than saying it was, it's there.
Right.
I don't know when it was...
What's the CO for, though? I mean, you know, the CO, we already had a conversation earlier...
The CO is for the barn and for the...
Yeah, but the...
For the house.
CO has to do with permit that lists a lot of things being done, and then a CO goes with it, but there's the details of what was done is there. I mean, it's not a mystery.
Do you want to just hold it open for a few weeks to...
I suppose, yeah. I mean, that seems the prudent thing to do.
Unless, do you have the, do you have the permit for that structure? We could look it up quickly. The...
If you have the number for that...
On the tax card?
Yeah, I'll just show you the tax card. Maybe you can interpret it down here.
I think I have enough cash to go into it. I have enough cash on me.
So they're calling it a bar?
It says it's a bar, so we need verification that it's a bar. It's got a cooktop, it's not, so...
So this is in the barn?
Right, let me just...
What are we doing on this one, guys?
Well, we found the, we've located the permit, which is 02-2305 for the barn, and it appears that it was noted in the permit that there was a bar.
It was inspected by zoning enforcement in April of 2013 and was closed out at that time based on that inspection.
As a bar.
As a bar.
Why is it on a drawing as a kitchen?
Can't answer that question.
Shouldn't be on a drawing as a kitchen if it's a bar.
Right, well, it's not. It's called a pantry.
And then I will instruct the architects to either revise their drawings or figure out what that is.
Change from pantry to bar.
Right.
Pantry is not a kitchen.
Well, you can't have it shown with a range in it. They've drawn a range in it with all the four cooking services on it.
I mean, it could just be that the architect just sometimes...
It could be a graphical depiction of something that, yes.
So I guess the question is, do you want to hold it open to revise the drawing, or do you want to run the risk of...
Close it and just submit as record or something.
Well, the thing is, though, if we close it and it does have all those pieces in it, and your client doesn't want to take those out, then you're gonna have to come and submit a new special permit.
Right, I see no harm in holding the meeting open for another two weeks.
So it's a good idea to hold it open, right.
Clear it up. Do you have any power in holding it open?
No, not at all.
Okay.
Can I have my toys back?
Comments from the public? Okay, open.
Thank you.
Last item of number 10. 60 Spring Street, preliminary site plan people, and special permit.
Mr. Frangione, just quickly, so you want to be on the June 30th, right?
Yes, please.
Okay, gotcha.
Good evening, again, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. For the record, Chip Haslam from Johnson, Haslam &amp; Hoagman for the applicant. I've lost my assistant. I think he went to watch the NBA game.
Where's your son?
He went to watch the NBA game on the avenue, and he hasn't come back.
The record...
I know.
The record, Mr. Hagney does better with his son.
All right, well, he makes him wear a suit, too, doesn't he? He's got a law degree, my son doesn't have a law degree, so...
You could have sentenced past his bedtime, you know.
It could be, too. So I will make the handouts.
If you have them to whatever, you know, we can...
Okay. With me tonight is Peter Hart, who's the architect, and this project, Nick Burley, the principal contract purchaser, and John Jancola, the engineer. I wanted to, first of all, just clear up, just move, the issue about the stipulated agreement that was entered into back in 2002, and there's some question about whether or not the applicant was going to pursue that stipulated agreement and claim that it was still valid. We're not. This is an application we're looking at, and I apologize, I actually talked to John Wetmore, as staff requested, on Friday, and told him I was gonna send him a letter asserting that fact, and my email crashed. I thought it had gone out, and it didn't until Monday, so I, and John went on vacation, but I did speak with him, and... Pardon me? Oh, you do? Okay, we see that, okay.
Well, the one that you sent up Monday, I then...
Yeah, I was supposed to go out on Friday before he left, and so, but in any event...
We have it now, it's the important thing.
Good, okay, so we're pursuing this application under the current regulations, and the buildings that exist, we are including all the FAR for those buildings as if they were under the current regulations, which in fact, we do believe they are. And we're building to the site based on that site coverage, that FAR, building coverage, et cetera, under the current regulations, and we're not looking for relief under the stipulation. Mr. Maylin.
On the FAR calculations, I noticed that you calculated them, since there are two dwelling units within the building, you've calculated each of the units to the demising wall between the two units and not included that. I believe that the way it's calculated is for the building as if that's just another interior wall, and therefore you go from exterior, the wall to exterior wall within the building and not to the demising wall.
You mean the interior of the perimeter wall, including that?
The interior demising between two units is a part of the FAR, just like any other interior wall.
All right, well, fortunately, we have some wiggle room, so we'll look at that and see if that's gonna impact us.
I'm correcting that, right?
Yes, you're correct.
Okay.
So I can, I did look at the drawing quickly, and I can tell that you weren't including that in your FAR calculation, so that will make some difference.
We'll need to look at that, then, not only for the proposed buildings, but also for the existing buildings, too, and make sure that those are both in accordance.
For sure.
All right. And in addition, there's some issue about great plane on building five, which we believe we can resolve. Building three, sorry, I misspoke. Building three, which we believe, it gets confusing between the buildings and the units, but it's building three, and it's resolvable. We just have to play around with it a little bit more, and we ran out of time, quite frankly. So I think it's a, the application is a good response to the problem that was kind of engendered by this company going bankrupt after the stipulated agreement was entered into, and hopefully allow the association to complete the project with my client's help and get the landscaping done, and the bond released, and finally put this to bed, which has been over 13 years. So I think when Nick first came to speak to me about it, I basically instructed him, I thought that it was wise to build to the current regulations, don't make an issue of the prior stipulation and try to ask for more than you could get under the current regulations, and that's what we try to be responsive to.
So building three, of course, is, the problem is that it's a three-and-a-half-story building.
With the current grade plane calculation as shown in the grading, that is correct, and for one area, which puts us over, and we're gonna have to resolve that.
The other thing is that, as you go through and count the parking spaces, I know that you've shown tandem spaces in front of the garages, and those don't count.
Correct.
Yet your submission says that you're gonna have 28 spaces, so the 20 garage spaces are set, so that means there's eight exterior spaces, and I can't find them, I can only find six.
John, could you point those out?
The six all exist in the first phase.
I think I can help you with that, Mr. Maylin. On the latest plan we submitted, it starts with, I'm sorry, oh, John Jancola, engineer and surveyor with Honneman Kirby LLC.
Hold the phone a little closer to you.
A microphone.
A microphone.
I don't want to blow your ears off.
Can't hear you.
I'm used to disco music, I dance every weekend. This is number one, two, three, four. Here's five, six, seven, eight. That's your 28. 20 plus one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
The two, the last two, the seven, eight, I guess I missed them when I looked at the drawing.
Okay.
Cleverly, those are also numbered seven and eight, because I found one, two, three, four, five, six. So those are already built in phase one.
Correct.
Okay.
We didn't have to show the tandem spots outside the garage, but we wanted to...
No, no, I just, because since I couldn't find those other two spaces, I wondered what you were counting, and I just missed them on the drawing.
The only other request we were gonna make was the fact that we are gonna be building, these buildings are gonna look exactly like the buildings that are currently constructed, and we would ask, in the interest of time, if it's possible to avoid having to go back to ARC for these additional units for their approval. We'd go back later on for landscaping and any pathway later or something that we needed to go back to, but as far as the actual design, we're just gonna duplicate all the materials that were used in the original design and build out the development. So if that's possible, we would ask that you consider it.
Since this is a preliminary, I think we would be asking you to go back to ARC, just as if you want to confirm the existing design, I'm sure they would understand, but that, at that point, you would be having to get the landscaping and any sightline and getting that approved at that time.
At the same time, right.
Did...
I'd ask, I thought I'd ask.
When we were at the briefing session yesterday, I mentioned that I had visited the site. Did you receive a report of that?
I heard that you'd seen some, that there was a car parked in the driveway that made it difficult to kind of get around it.
Completely impossible. The entryway was completely blocked with the car going horizontally across the driveway. It wasn't in the middle parallel with, it was, what's the opposite of parallel? Anyway, it was across, perpendicular to the driveway, and then the adjoining neighbors have everything blocked off. And so I got concerned about what's going on with circulation there and whether it's a problem, and it was just the evidence of the site that was bothering me. So why was that car there? Was that like a happenstance thing? All right, I think that I...
I don't know. I mean, we're the contract purchasers of the property, and we'd have to talk to the owners' association and seeing if they're having difficulties with that and how that can be resolved.
It seems like they're blocking people from accessing the property for some reason. I mean, that seemed deliberate, and the driveways are blocked, and I, you know, it just was bizarre. And the driveways are blocked, and I, you know, it just was bizarre. So, you know, I just got concerned about, View Street is tough, those streets, you know, right in that neighborhood are hard. We did something similar on Stone Avenue, remember?
Right.
Streets are hard. You have the land area, understand all that, but it's just, is there a circulation problem? Is there an access problem? What's going on there?
I mean, the way we designed it, it shouldn't be any problem with circulation or access, but as a practical matter, I can't speak to it, I don't know from the...
So, maybe we could just talk about it, you know, when you come back and just see if there's any issue that...
Let him look into it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Will do.
What else do we have, guys?
Is there any reason why you wouldn't convert this to final and see if you can...
No, ARC. No, and plus, he's got, he's got to resolve DPW issues. He's got, he's got some questions from Sauer.
There's a lot of details that need to be addressed.
And he's got a list from the CEO. He's just, they've just got a lot of stuff that they need to just get fixed.
I mean, I think it's all resolvable.
Yeah, it looks resolvable.
It's a few pieces that...
There were no deal breakers, it didn't look like, but it just, there was a long list.
Coverage could be a deal break. I mean, that, you're right.
That FAR thing.
Fifty percent, and FAR, I hope you do have the cushion that you think.
We should be fine, but that can add up, as you know, Mr. Maitland, those interior spaces.
That does add up.
Right.
You're close.
Right.
I mean, you're five-three versus five-five, I mean, it's close.
You're within 70 square feet. You've taken care of that, so I think you are...
Yeah, no, it's, I think we're better than that, but I hear you, it's an issue that we're going to have to look at, so.
Yes.
I mean, if that one, just to finish the argument, if that were to happen, they could give a full extension, but that would only get it to the August 4th meeting. And so, all of those issues would have to be resolved, including going to the ARC and renotice and whatnot.
Between now and August 4th.
Well, between now and August 4th, so just to...
The question is, I think the question is, do we want to close this tonight as a preliminary and then make a decision on that? Because all of these conditions that we're talking about are going to have to get resolved by final.
Right.
So, I do...
If we close it, if we close it as a preliminary, I kind of would like to have some kind of comment from Beta on the access and the...
Well, the access is the access.
Well, I know, but we're adding these units. I wonder, does anybody, does anybody have any interest in seeing anything on, from Beta? If I'm the only one who's worried about, okay.
Because I think what's happening now with the people is they come in and they have to pull over to the right. I mean, the one advantage that you'll have is that you now at least will be able to back in to the other property to go drive out of the site.
Right.
Back in and then back.
That's right.
You have no place to turn, so...
You get caught.
Right. Either way you go, at least you'll be able to back out and drive out of the site without... Now, what that's going to do to the people who live on View Street, I don't know, but that's not, I guess, our problem.
I think we know enough to move it ahead.
Right, so, so what Mr. Maitland was saying is, do you want to close it and act on a preliminary? Or do you want to, or do they, the applicant perhaps wants to grant a full extension? They could go to July 15.
Conditioned, I know these other things being fixed.
Anybody got a problem with that?
And the only thing is if you get stuck on the FAR, but...
Any problems?
But I've got it, I've got to resolve it, right, one or the other.
Comes in for final, that's right.
Yeah.
Okay?
I'm sorry, Mr.?
I think we can move it ahead tonight.
So, you're going to close it and grant preliminary and then go to ARC and go back to final?
But we don't know what we're going to grant.
You never know.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to presume, but, right, right.
Good try. Okay. Close.
Thank you.
Nope, okay. Thank you all. Let's go now.
That's the end.
The end, ma'am. Okay, let's go to, let's do Harbor House. Now, again, Mr. Brooks and I are out of this conversation.
How unusual.
Who wants to take it up first, anybody?
What's that, the CEO?
Harbor House.
Harbor House.
Does the CEO think he can fix?
Actually, well, okay, I'll start it.
Never seen you tongue tied before.
Not in the form of a motion, please, I mean, a discussion.
That's fine. Oh, you don't like my motion?
I just thought a motion might be a little premature here.
All right.
I should have given them a couple minutes to organize.
Well, because it was at the bottom of the pile, that's all.
Okay, so the seated people are Mr. Maitland, Mrs. Alvin, Mr. Fox, Mr. Levy, and Mrs. Raymer. Those are the people that can...
I, this is before us as a six, 141 application, which is changing one non-conforming use to another. In that, the 141 regulation was talked about this evening, but it has in it the, the sort of one subjective part, which is whether the application is more or less... Have to find my sheet so I can read it correctly.
Detrimental.
No, I wanted to find it, and I had it here somewhere.
Would you like me to read it?
Thought it was organized. It says that one non-conforming use may be changed if section 615, 617 standards are followed, and if the use is not more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing use. The existing use is, it's called a bed and breakfast. We don't have that use in our regulations, so as close as we can come, there would be three categories under which the existing use would be evaluated. One would be a boarding house, a boarding...
Did he say a boarding house?
Yeah, we have them in the...
And the other one would be a rooming house.
Or a hotel.
Or a hotel. The boarding house says five or more where rooms are granted and meals are served, or just rooms. The rooming house says, again, five or more. But both of those have the connotation that those are done for compensation. So, that clearly outlines a business use. And the last one, which maybe is the closest just because of the number of rooms, is in fact, a hotel. So, whatever it is, that clearly is a non-conforming use in the R-12 zone. The standards of 617 and 615 both start with being in conformity with the plan of conservation and development. In that section, division two is for the preservation of historic resources in town. And the action strategies for preserving the community character are bullet point one, to protect prehistoric, comma, historic and cultural resources, and bullet number two, protect the scenic resources. So, clearly, this application is before us, and the first test in both 615 and 617 is to be in conformity with the plan of conservation and development, which I think this application is. Clearly, the letter that we got from the HDC indicates their narrative of why they think it is, and also their enthusiastic support for the application. The 615 standards were, as was discussed earlier this evening, that number three, which is the protection of environmental quality and the preservation enhancement of property values. Then it says, at least the following aspects of the site plan shall be evaluated to defer, to determine the conformity of a site plan to the standards. The preservation enhancement of property values is a very subjective statement. While we had a lot of opinions about it, some were saying it would destroy property values, and some would say that it would enhance property values. I think that if you go into, and I think that's why there are six standards, seven standards, to evaluate that. And I think the most relevant one, relevant one, is 3D, which the standards to be evaluated of whether this is a preservation enhancement of property values is, the preservation of natural attributes, major features of the site, such as wetlands, highly erodible area, and then the key one, historic structures. Which I do think that the preservation of that does serve the goals of the three preservation enhancement of property values, because it is, by preserving the historic structure, that is a meaningful contribution to the, to that standard. In acting upon a site plan, the commission may take into consideration recommendations of a lot of people, and therefore, the recommendations that we have from, I think, the Historic District Commission is very relevant in the analysis of the site plan standards under 615. If you go to 617 on the standards for special permit, first one again is be in accordance with the plan of development. I'm going to skip through several of them because I don't believe they apply, but number four, not materially adversely affect adjacent areas within the closest proximity to the use. The closest proximity to the use were the abutting neighbors who gave their wholehearted support to this project. So, I will say, just say that. The next one is not adversely affect safety in the streets nor increase traffic congestion. I think we have a study from Beta, who is our traffic engineer, where they analyze the uses, and I think that's the only way that we can analyze this property. And I will just, I know Nancy's going to disagree, but I think that the, the use of it for 23 rooms is going to generate far more traffic than the use of it for six condo units, and that was, that was substantiated by the traffic analysis. Number 10, a special permit is to preserve land structures or features having special historic, cultural, architectural merit. It has, it does have special historic and special cultural in that many of the references made by the Historic District Commission were as to the character that it was built in, the time it was built in, the uses that it served and so forth. Very important to the, to that area. Number 11, will not materially adversely affect residential uses nor be detrimental to a neighborhood or its residents, nor alter a neighborhood's essential characteristics. I think it's, it's sort of telling that the application is for six units, which was adversely received by some in the, in the audience, but support was for three units instead of six. The fault of that logic is, to me, that three units is multifamily by our own regulations, and therefore, would be the same as the multifamily of the six units, so what is the difference? The only difference that I can think of is that the traffic could be greater with six units than three, but I think it's really kind of parsing a lot to say that it's going to somehow adversely affect the neighborhood by having three more dwelling units involved. I think the other one that you might look at, it's a little shaky, but anyway, it just says, preserve where possible existing housing stock so as to maintain and contribute to diversity of housing opportunities within town. I think that it clearly doesn't do that, but it does do part of it, which is, it does substitute different housing to, to meet different, to give the diversity of housing within the town. That said, that is what I think we can look at this as, or certainly under those, under a six, 141. I think what we're getting from it is not only the preservation of it, but the applicant has gone on record as putting some severe restrictions on the use of the roof. They've gone on and redesigned it to get rid of the accessory structure and have put on the carports as an adjunct feature, in my opinion, well-integrated into the design of the, of the overall dwelling unit. And then, lastly, that they have agreed to reduce the overall surface area of the decks which are over and on the roof of the carport, and have agreed to substitute a green roof in part of it, and moving the railings back from the edges of the carport thereby even reducing further the visual impact of these on the, on the town and community. They have also reduced it to four based on our earlier conversations at an earlier meeting, so they've done that. I do think the restoration of this back to its original state and getting rid of the vinyl siding and so forth would be a huge improvement visually. And I think the issue of the port cochere and the, and the issue of the porches have been looked at, and again, I think there can be feelings one way or the other, but the HDC has looked at those two subjects and have said that the design as presented, again, has their wholehearted support. So, that's my sort of opening discussion.
That was quite thorough. So, I'm not going to repeat anything but to say that I agree with that. But I do want to mention that the careful attention to the adaptive reuse and historicism of paying attention to the historic features of the building are really admirable. And the applicant was unflinching in meeting the demands of critics of the program. He didn't, he bought it, he was, shows a great intention to not only do the right thing, but to want to do this project the right way. So, I think that I'm very supportive of this, this project.
I, just to add to what you've said, and I forgot in my opening, but they are willing to grant the facade easement on all four facades of the building, which I think is, is major. And I think that the, he went on in great detail what he was going to do to the building in the restoration of the siding, the windows, the roofing, I, the interior common spaces, yeah. And I think with the reopening and re-exposing of the stone foundation wall and so forth, I think all of those features went into his presentation to HDC. And again, I think it's, I think it is going to be an outstanding structure when they're done. And I don't think the port cochere, and what he was trying to say, and it may not have come across to everybody, is that there is a small porch on the front of the, of the new building, which does in fact echo the shape of the port cochere. It does not extend out the 15 or 18 feet, whatever. It comes out about four feet, if I can remember from the drawings, what, maybe three feet. But it is an echo of that, of that, and I think that's a, I think, again, in the adaptive reuse and in historic preservation, those are all considered positives when you go into the, to that kind of work. So, I want to get that on the record, too.
Is balconies?
I think the balconies, I've been troubled by those personally, but I do think the fact that being cut into the, what they are is, you know, they're, they're cut into, they're not hanging on the face of the building. They're cut into a sloping roof because the first floor is bigger than the floor above it, so it has some areas where there are roofs that are coming over it. And it's being cut into those, so I think that it's... And again, those were all looked at by Historic District Commission. I did have earlier concerns, but I'm, I'm accepting of HDC. I mean, we go to, we have them for a reason, and they, they've looked at this, and they... were okay with that. And they did modify the one to become a Juliet balcony, which you know what that means, I think. So I think that is, that was-
At the request of a neighbor.
At the request of a neighbor. So I think that shows their good faith and so forth. I do think that when he described the landscaping plan, absent the north part, which he'll give us, but I mean, the, I think it was, that was a thoughtful plan and I think it does screen the project about as well as you can screen it while maintaining safety and coming out of the driveways and so forth and getting to the sound shore, whatever, whatever the road is. And I do think in addition, he was going to, Katie, pull back that asphalt in front of all four of the carports to be at the reasonable minimum or to match what he has on the west end. So I think that's an additional part of the green space and I think that they have clearly, the existing green space is thirty-eight point six percent and they're going up to forty-six point five and once we get the additional thrown in, they're getting pretty close to fifty. So I think they've gone a long way in, in trying to keep it a green site and I, actually I, I thought their addition of the carports and the way they did it, when I first saw it, I thought it was a superb response to the criticisms they had received for it as an accessory structure. And I was very, and if he gave you credit Nancy, so I'll give you credit for coming up with that idea, so.
The balconies don't bother me at all. They are so nicely integrated into the roof, but also they don't come out any wider than the opening itself, which is very important. And the fouscape is so expansive and the railing itself is so well embedded in it that I think that along with, with all the other articulation on, on the facade, it's, does it make it a little busier, maybe, but I just don't think that it has any real impact visually because so much other things are going on. And it's, there's an asymmetry to it also, which also is, is very important that I think helps as well. So I don't have any problem with it.
Andy, did you have-
I think, excuse me, one last thing too, I just want to get it for the record, is that he did come up with that idea to, to, in the gravel areas to put the Belgium blocks in to separate the spaces, so. Sorry, Andy.
I think that as you have pointed out, the Historic Society has overwhelmingly endorsed the plan.
Historic District.
Historic District. And I don't see anything contrary swinging the pendulum for us to overrule that from an architectural standpoint. I think that with the carports as previously presented freestanding, I was totally against that because I thought it increased the bulk on the lot. I think by bearing them, they've done a remarkable job at that. I think the BETA report with the traffic, I think they identified their twenty-three hotel rooms and three apartments and, you know, base mass shows that this is a lesser of an impact on traffic. And essentially, we're getting the facade easement on all four sides to keep this historic structure in perpetuity. And so I think that they've, I think done a nice job of listening to the commission and the neighbors to come up with solutions to keep the structure.
So under six one seven, number nine, be in scale width and compatible with surrounding uses, buildings, streets, and open spaces. I don't think it meets that criteria. And I do not think it meets eleven. Will not materially adversely affect the residential uses nor be detrimental in a neighborhood or its, or to, sorry, to a neighborhood or its residents or alter a neighborhood's essential character. I feel that this-
I think that the, the historic overlay zone is a good frame of reference for what is a balancing act. And it's a well-articulated concept and that gives you three units and I think that's, that's a fair balancing of taking the zoning in a neighborhood and blowing it out of the water in effect for the preservation of a historic building. But I just visualize a six apartment building, no matter how charming on the outside, this is multifamily housing in a single-family zone and it's six units. And it's just contrary to the, to the overall plan for this area and it's very disturbing to me.
But the envelope isn't changing, so whether you make it into a three unit or a six unit, it's, you're not, there's no more bulk as a result of it.
The building hasn't got more bulk, the impact on this neighborhood, the sense, I think it probably, would you want to live in an R-12 zone next to a six-unit condominium and how do you think it might affect property values?
But I think we're charged with the idea of, is this less, more or less detrimental to the neighborhood and I-
There are three questions here. There's six fifteen, six seventeen, and one forty-one. It has three tests. They're all referenced. So I've said my piece.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Would you feel the same way if this building was not historic, meaning if it was just a change of use, going from one non-conforming use to another and the building wasn't historic, would you still feel the same way about the balancing test of one and nine?
Well, the balancing test pertains to historic overlay, so, I mean, oh, I'm sorry, what-
In other words, if this building was not, just had not to be a historic structure, would you still pull in that section as a, as a way to, in your mind, balance, balance out the degree of non-conformity?
If there is a, if there's a non-conforming, I mean, I guess the question's a little abstract, if the building would depend on what the building use was frankly. I think that the preservation of historic buildings is very important. It's important to me, I live in a very old house, I keep everything old, I'm a lunatic about it. I, no, I mean, just so you know where I'm coming from, I, I don't value the idea of tearing down as we do in this country and somehow the rest of the world manages to save its old things, so I honor that greatly. But I, I believe this neighborhood has the right to our very serious consideration of what this means to them and that's another part of what we're supposed to do here. It is not just, we can't just look at historic preservation alone, we have to look at what it's doing to this neighborhood.
No, but we are looking at one forty-
We did, and I think, I think they had as many, well, they certainly had as many speakers from the neighborhood who were in support of it and the two people most affected are the adjacent neighbors who are in support of it.
There's a short street and every other person on it signed one of those letters.
But every other person on that street is not impacted because they, they took the driveway off of that street and pulled it over to Sound View-
Sure.
Sure, thank you. In response to the neighbors. So they took the traffic off of the street, put it over on Sound Shore.
You're thinking pure traffic. I'm, I'm thinking what is the impact of, of what belongs in, in R-six?
R-12.
R's twelve.
What belong, multifamily, six-unit condominium belongs not in this neighborhood.
Nor does a three unit.
The, the balance in weighing-
How do you weigh three to six? I mean, on traffic or anything?
I'm not, the traffic-
But we're not supposed to be weighing three to six.
No, I know, but it's broad.
We're supposed to be weighing twenty-three plus three to six. What, the property values, the people next door, I feel are more impacted having a hotel across the street in a commercial use. They're impacted more today than if that gets changed to total residential. And, and I think their property values will go up because you are eliminating a commercial use across the street. And I'm somewhat cognizant of those appraisal facts, but I don't think the value of the property to the neighbors is getting diminished by this. I don't, I think it's actually going to go up. I think the traffic is going down. We can't measure the traffic as it is today or yesterday, but we have to measure it as the use is, which is twenty-three rooms. I mean, I mean, what would they say if they put a restaurant there? Why, I mean, and-
No, no, you can't, I mean, that's not a speculation we can go to.
No, but it is because that's a use they're allowed to use.
No, in other words, a speculation we can go to this is going to reduce property values in a neighborhood. I must tell you, I've been on this commission a long time and I've heard it from day one and I don't think the property values in Greenwich have ever gone down.
Well, there's an, this provision is expressed though, you know.
The what?
This, this-
It says it shall not be detrimental and I don't think it is detrimental. I don't think almost anything you do in Greenwich is detrimental.
One, the, the, a part three, paragraph three of six fifteen speaks expressly to economic consequence.
But it gives you seven things to test that against and all the seven-
You shall consider at least, but the statement of purpose is the preservation and enhancement of property values.
Was any fact disclosed in the, in the hearing we held on this that supported that concept that by remodeling this, property values will, will diminish? Was any fact done?
No.
No. I've heard, I've heard those words though for fifteen years and I'm here to tell you the property values in Greenwich have never gone down, so.
Except during the recession.
Well, but that's for factors beyond the property being built next door to you, so.
So I think we should just vote honestly because it's not like anybody's going to change anybody's mind.
It's a bit of a tricky, we've got some stuff to add in, don't we?
I tried to get it all in, did I miss anything?
We're always here to help you.
Good.
Before one vote is coming.
When you say you'd make a motion.
Yeah, that's what we're going to do. Oh, yeah, yeah.
All right. I would make a motion to, I make a motion to approve the final site plan and special permit for the Harbor House with the following conditions. I mean, I think for the whereas clauses can all be derived from what the discussion was, so the conditions are-
You know what, there's a, there's a, one other section of the P O C D, and I know I should have said this earlier, in chapter three of the P O C D, it's, beyond the preservation of community character, it also has something about encouraging diversity in housing. And I, I actually think that since this has the easement, it also meets the facade, I think it also meets that goal of diversity in housing within a neighborhood.
Okay. But, but I think the most important thing is that the overall reaching, one of the overall reaching goals of the P O C D is, but is to preserve the and enhance the residential character of the town of Greenwich. We are removing a commercial property and replacing it with a residential use, so I think it's-
Exactly right. Exactly right. And it's the first goal of the P O C D, it's the first thing we state.
So, number one, the, the conditions, number one is the facade easement under all four facades. Number two, as to the actual, I don't know how much detail to get into in the actual scope of the rehab, but I mean, we can put in the generalities of what he said he was going to do.
Shingles, the windows.
And the exterior walls need to stay up.
Well-
He can't take it down to the foundation and rebuild, he's got to maintain the exterior walls throughout the renovation process.
Okay. And further, he said he was going to not change any of the window openings in those facades, they will remain as they are.
The windows are going to be-
And restore the ones in the stone walls.
The windows and the shingles.
Okay.
Okay.
I do think we need to get the revised, just to get a revised landscape, to get, pick up that chunk up at the north, just to get that in there. I do think that the roof, the conditions on the roof that he was willing to agree to is no more than ten people. I think there would be no lighting.
No gatherings, no lighting, no amplification.
No.
And no parties.
No furniture, he said.
And no furniture.
That's a tricky one, I, that's a-
He said that.
He said no swimming pools, no spas, no, okay, that's fine.
No furniture, no amplified music, no parties, no lighting.
Amplified, that's the word I was after, is amplified music.
I told you I'd help.
Thank you.
So does that mean you can have a guitar player up there?
The part about the identifying this parking spaces in the gravel area should be a condition with the blocks.
Well, I don't know, I don't know if we, that they should be identified, you could use plantings to do that, you know, everybody backs into, you know, on a planting on center.
Tricky.
But I don't think he can give up any space to get plant, he's got it pretty well marked out, he'll, he's done it to-
Is that what he wanted to do? Is that the idea?
No, because in gravel, how do you know where your spot is?
No, but he said-
He would put in the granite blocks to be, instead of the painted lines on asphalt, then he'd get the granite blocks in the, in the gravel.
Well, it's a very, a very nice feature if he does it.
Oh, well, we're going to make him do it. We'll put it in the reg, we'll put it into the condition.
Okay, so that's it. You wanted to move some of the asphalt around?
Well, yes, the asphalt to, to reduce the amount of asphalt in front of the carports to the minimum. And then again, all of the stuff that he was, said he was willing to do on the, on the roofs of the carports to reduce the, to pull in the, to number one, half of what he's showing, he is willing to do is a green roof. Half of the carport.
Yeah, when you say green roof, you're talking about the kind of situation where you have like a column of soil.
Well, it can be-
It's usually, you know, east of foot or so, so I mean-
They do it some with succulents and things like that that can be painted green, no, it's not to be painted green. It is to be-
It's a living roof.
But to make it a living roof, I mean, there's structural issues there, you've got to make it like a foot or so, so just, just so-
No, that's, that's what he agreed to do and that's what we will do. And then the, that's half of the carport, that the half that doesn't have the door in front of it, the other half that's got the door for access, he's willing to reduce that area and, and pull back the-
Railings.
The railings to within ten feet of the building. So I think actually that we ought to get an L-shaped green roof, that, the more I think about it, because that, in other words, he pulls the railing back in front, and so it's ten feet away from the building, so at least the other ten feet of the, of the carport roof, so we'll get an L-shaped green roof and the rest of that, so one-fourth of the, three-fourths of it shall be green, one-fourth of it can be a patio, deck, whatever.
The landscape plan is going to A R C?
What do you think? And the lighting? We talked about it, should we have A R C look at it or just staff review it? I mean, we've seen the landscaping a bunch of times, so actually I think all of us are pretty comfortable with the landscaping.
I'm comfortable with the landscape.
Yeah. Well, that planted area that they're doing in the front is no.
I think staff reviews enough.
Yeah, so why don't we just-
And he didn't have any lighting, so.
But he's going to end up with something.
Well, there'd be a couple of lights, of course, but-
The big honker that he put in-
No tennis, no tennis court lighting permitted.
That big old glow that you see on a big ear.
So staff will review lighting and landscaping.
Yeah, I think that-
The area where the green roof meets the edge of the- The area where the green roof meets the edge of the carport, though.
Yes, it'll have to have a.
That's obviously got to be stabilized in there somehow, so what is that going to look like?
It's an architectural detail, but I'm just, it'll, it's going to be thicker. I mean, what you're going to see is you're going to see the upper part of it. And depending how he designs the green roof, I mean, what I would assume he would do is he'll just raise it in that L-shaped portion, and the other portion, he'll just leave level, because he can walk out from the unit.
Yeah, might get a little taller, because they're still going to need the clearance and everything.
Right, that's his.
No, no, he'll build up. My guess is he'll build up from what he's got now.
And then he'll actually screen the fence more.
That'll screen the fence even more. That's what I thought he would do.
Right, but at some point where the, where the edge of the green roof meets the edge of the carport, that's what we're saying, it's going to be a bit.
Oh, yeah.
It's going to be something.
We don't know, we didn't.
Between those, to retain it kind of in there.
There's an anticipation that it's going to be seven and a half feet above grade, not six and a half feet above grade.
What?
Well, depending on what you need, you can get a green roof down to seven inches now.
Yeah, as I say, you use succulents and things like, you can get a pretty shallow green roof, but I think we have to just kind of trust him.
To design it.
But we know what we want, so that's what I think we should say.
Okay.
And staff will have to review it, and if you don't like it, you can bring it back to the commission. If you don't want, so, I think that's the fail-safe on it.
Okay.
That looks funny.
That's, the facade easement, the ten residents, the root, the regulations on the roof.
The landscape plan had to be updated, showing the north.
And just, just.
Lot line, plantings.
And just a technical point, the facade easement on that facade where the carports are, so it would just be of the existing building, not the, not with the.
No, it will be with the carports, because the carports are attached to the buildings, so as far as I'm concerned.
That's part of it.
He's got to do it, because.
You know that part is new, okay, but that's, yeah, just to get that point.
So, any change to any of the facades in the future will ha, and he said the, it will be granted through the historic district, so they would.
So they would have to go back to the.
They would have to go to H D C for any modification.
Right.
He said he was going to make it enforce, he, how did he say he was going to have the enforcing agent, the H D C? Is that what he said? Is that okay with us?
Yeah, I mean, usually what we do is we, for the facade easements, is we basically mirror the language of the historic overlay, frankly, because we don't have, we don't have a model other than what the historic overlay.
No, but is the idea of the enforcement of that
Yes.
that's okay to do it with H D C? Okay. I think I've got, is that everything?
Right, so everything I got.
Everything?
Is H D C authorized to enforce that? Well, they don't, they don't enforce, what they, what they, so any change, the zoning enforcement officer is always the enforcer, thinks. But the historic district commission enforces it in the sense of if there's a change, you have, they have to, they're required to go back to the historic district commission, so they're the enforcer of the change in that sense.
So should they come back to us and us defer?
Oh, yes, no, you're the ultimate.
So it should be come to us and we would then.
That's fine.
Forward it to, that it's that way.
Okay, that keeps it within enforcement, that's fine.
Richard, they're doing, they're, they're doing something to the landscape plan, there's, are they doing anything with the, with the patio area? Or they're staying this, we're not saying anything about them?
I don't, the, the swoopy one in front?
Is there an issue there now?
I brought it up, the, more what the purpose was, but.
We didn't talk about the materials on that either, I don't know.
We should just have it specified in the landscape plan.
All right, okay. Fine.
I mean, if I, if I could just know, just, just for you, just discuss a little part.
Did you get that last comment?
Section six dash one nine point one, which is in the historic overlay, subsection six, it talks about the special permit for alterations in addition. This is, we, we take the language that's right in here and have it be in the declaration. So it talks about, this is what we did on the Slagle House, for an example, which is facade easement at the U S T building. And it just talks about requiring the special permit, you come back before the commission, and the minor work, which is limited to a change in the history or moving parts, elements, and materials which shall be accepted from the special apartment, and then it's going to get appropriated and approved by the historic district commission.
Fine, but I mean, we've done, whatever we've done before to do this is, if that's what we've done before, that's, do it again. Anybody else got anything? Okay. And seconded?
Who seconded?
Andy.
Andy.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Four to one, situation carries. Okay. Let's go through where we are.
Do try to make the resolutions a little shorter.
Eleven ninety-one, East Putnam.
No problem on this, we, we shorten them up from now on. I think, okay, I would move the approval of the final site plan and special permit with the following notations. That the applicant has indicated that the, under six one fifty-eight, we, we can modify the regulations for parking. And I believe that under that regulation, the applicant submitted enough data from existing facilities that the sixteen, instead of the eighteen's parking spaces would be sufficient, with three being reserved for residential at all times and the other one being handicapped. I think that the, I think that they, the architectural review committee did approve the landscaping and lighting. And the applicant needs to go back to A R C to finalize the approvals necessary for the building.
Does the E O comment about the mechanicals?
The Z E O had no, what, a comment on mechanicals?
Maybe it's an old, I mean, they, they, the sewer comments that are outstanding, that they need to address the sewer.
Well, the sewer outstanding ones may be old, because it's probably for a grease trap or something.
No, they, it was more complicated than that. And I would suggest that, or ask that prior to a zoning permit, that we should get a lot coverage plan, so it's very clear what it is that they're counting towards lot coverage.
Okay.
Okay, second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, eighty Oak Ridge Street.
I would move the application, which is to, it is, if I'm correct, this technically is a, an application to confirm the two-family status. Is that correct, Katie?
I think so.
Or is it, see, it says to convert, but we have.
They're, they believe it was a two-family.
Not only do they believe it, but the assessors did two for a long time.
Right, so I think they are asking to confirm.
So, anyway, okay, well, if that's, my motion is to confirm that the building is a, existing two-family, and the basis for that is the most recent building permit issued was for a two-family dwelling. And the, while the current tax assessor's cards do not indicate that, the, the assessor's cards through the seventies, through the nineties, all had this property listed as two-family. I think it is compliant as to the number of cars for parking, and normally we would say one garage, but I think what we're confirming primarily is an existing condition. I think it is certainly within keeping of the streetscape that is present on Oak Avenue and the Oak Ridge, Oak Ridge Street. Therefore, I would move the approval of it as being, or to confirm the two-family status of the property.
Brooks confirmed.
No, Brooks seconded.
Seconded, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay. We're now at zero North Street.
I would move the approval of the final site plan, special permit for this application with the following comments. Hurst. I think that the, I, I think, I wish, I wish to sort of say, I think I made a mistake.
Uh-oh.
In saying that this, the, that the planting plan is not a part of our requirements.
Yep.
I think it is, and I, I sort of, I apologize for that.
I, I actually would like to apologize, because I believe that's not.
All right.
I think I misvoted, it's section one seventy-seven.
Yes.
Well, it is part of our requirements in terms of soil erosion and ensuring that the site is stabilized. However, when I was, when I was referring to section six one eighty
Uh-huh.
and type B, that doesn't apply, because section six one eighty only comes into.
Play if you're against the business district.
Right, when you look at section six dash one seventy-seven, so it's actually, well, not necessarily business district, because it's also non-residential uses of residential zone, so.
But it's not for this one.
Right, which is not the case here. Now, having said that, though.
Thank you.
Six one ninety or something? Right, well, having said that, though, under, since this is a special permit.
Right.
You know, just ensuring that the site meets the special permit and site plan standards and ensuring that the site's stable and.
Yeah, but we don't say anything about landscaping in words that you can point to there, do we?
Not in terms of number of trees and things like that.
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I do think, yes, I think.
It's things like preserving or enhancing important open space and other features of the natural environment, protecting against areas.
But six one ninety has the requirements for residential.
Minimum landscaping standards.
For residential.
But if it's against the business zone, I think, isn't that what?
No, six one ninety is regular residential, that's what we figured out the other day, finally. That was the big thing.
X number of trees on the property line.
Well, six one ninety is under the, is under the section of site plans.
Right.
And it says landscaping and tree planting is encouraged. All street tree planting complies with regulations of D P W, and planting areas within the parking areas are to be encouraged, so it implies it's talking about commercial.
Where's the one that has the trees?
The one that has the trees.
The one, I was talking, I was reading from section six dash seventeen, D, number six. Preserve or enhance important open space and other features of the natural environment.
Planting regulations.
Oh, I, right, that was.
Planting specs.
Yeah, no, that was, that was section six dash one eighty, but that doesn't apply to residential zones.
Six one seventy-seven, so division seventeen is planting and screening. So you've got the purpose of the division, then you've got uses where it's to be done, and then the required planting, required planting exceptions. And then, under six one eighty, it says schedule of required screening and planting, and then type.
All yards in residence, R twenty, R twelve, that's what Andy and I were reading the other day.
I know, but the thing is, when you, when you go to section six one seventy-seven, it says screening and accordance with the schedule set forth in one eighty should be required for the following uses. And one through seven is all about business uses or non-residential uses.
Well, I think it's a mistake, because it says all yards in residence, R twenty, R twelve, R seven and R six.
But they're talking about if there's a non-residential use within this residence.
Babe, it says use.
I don't think so.
All, all uses.
No, no, go back, because it, it, you don't even get to one eighty yet, because you have to be here first.
You have to start at one seventy-seven.
But what I'm saying is that there's an inconsistency at best, because if you look at one eighty, it says all uses.
Right, no, I understand that.
Including residential, and where they're talking about non-residential, they specify non-residential. So I think there's an error, if you will, in one seventy-seven.
Okay, right.
Well, we've never done it, but, you know, the reason I said it so quickly is that in all the time I've been here, we've never really required any planting plans on these residential uses.
Well, I think, what, what are we trying to achieve with the planting plan? Are we trying to achieve screening? Are we trying to achieve soil stabilization?
In a residential neighborhood where you got a four-acre zone and a, or two-acre, four-acre parcel and two-acre zone, I don't think we're too worried about screening and so forth, I think we're just landscaping the site. And as I said before, you know, at this level, there's no schedule in, in our regs that are going to meet what they're going to put on that site.
Yeah, but you said that, you said something else, and I want you to use that.
It's just not going to happen.
Yeah, and I've seen.
You're not going to spend six or seven million dollars to build it.
Okay.
He's going to submit it, so we're going to get it done with, with planning and zoning, signing off with conservation.
And I think you require that under section six seventeen.
Yes, we do.
It is a special permit use.
Special permit use, yeah.
He agreed to do it anyway, so, anyway.
I think we need to clarify that, because the way I read six one eighty and the way we were reading it the other day, is all uses, including residential.
Well, okay.
Okay, so landscape plan is to be reviewed by staff and conservation, including restoration of the trees.
What do you mean, including the restoration of the trees?
There's no restoration.
Forget it.
I know they are.
We're going to get the overall plan reviewed, so that's all we're, that's all we care about.
But you're saying replace the twenty-three?
With consideration of putting in more trees, you know, make a more sentence about putting in some nice trees.
How hard is it?
It is.
Make me happy.
Okay, the only other thing on this was, the only other thing on this one was the, the attic just needs to be clarified to get the trusses and conventional framing and so forth. And that's through the Z E O, though, that, but other than that, I don't have any other specifics.
Does somebody down there want a second?
Very hard to.
That's a motion that's been made.
Fred?
And it's seconded, but it was.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, five sixty.
Well, you've got to manage your end of the day.
Five sixty-four North Street.
Which one?
Five six.
Five sixty-four North Street, so, go ahead.
So re-subdivision?
Yes, and it's consistent with the P O C D?
Yes. It's a re-subdivision.
I would move the approval of the final re-subdivision for this property with the, the renaming of the open space to be correctly in the name of the owner. Number two, any drainage easements shall be shown on the record map. The existing areas which are going to be put into the open space need to be, they are currently lawn areas, they need to be.
Submit a restoration plan.
Thank you.
Very good.
With native, native plan.
Native species, yeah.
Good. And then they were going to put in the boulder demarcation to that.
Yep.
And I do think we need to say on this one that the re-subdivision is from a three-lot subdivision to a two-lot subdivision, so it further, just, maybe just saying it reduces the development potential.
And that the relocation of the open space is, you know, is, is more consistent with the goals of the P O C D, and, and I think we should probably have a whereas about the, part of the old open space now protected by, because of the wetland setback, and how this is an enhancement of protection of open space. P O C, oh, and so that the re-subdivision is more consistent with the P O C D, I think that is it.
Okay. Second? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
I don't think anybody.
Okay, Erlingham is open.
Ooh, repeat that?
Erlingham, Erlingham is open.
Oh, no, Spring Street's not open, you guys wanted to do the.
We wanted to.
What?
We closed on that.
Spring Street, we closed on Spring Street.
Well, you're not there yet, you got Applejack.
Oh, shoot, I'm sorry.
Applejack.
We closed Erlingham, or you closed Erlingham.
We have Applejack.
Wait, wait.
We closed sixteen Hurlington, so we got to do that one.
It's Erlingham that we closed and Applejack that we.
And Applejack got left open.
That's it, I had, yeah.
Yeah, I did too, you, we both.
So we got to do Erlingham.
A bunch of incompetence here.
Erlingham.
Donald and I were being incompetent at the same time, when does that happen?
By the way, we have another minute to do it.
I will move the approval of the final site plan and special permit for this with the notations that the Z E O needs to have, to comply with Z E O. All of the additions are compliant with the side yard setbacks, although the existing building has a non-conforming intrusion to one of the side yards. I W W A and health are okay with the proposal, D P W is okay for building permit, and the stair tower which leads from the terrace to the ground has been reduced to meet now the accessory building standards. And the, I don't know what it was called before, kitchenette area or something like that has been reduced and, and to a wet bar. And that's it.
Do we have a.
Second?
That's the motion.
I second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, Spring, Spring.
Spring has sprung.
Spring has sprung, the grass is riz, I wonder where the flowers is.
He's tired. They're reciting essential, this is essential poetry.
Zipping back to grade school.
Yeah, I was gonna say, poetry for the essential I O one? What happened?
Do we have a motion on ten?
Yeah, just a second.
I think we have one more minute, a minute to do after the, we only did one of.
No, we did the minutes already.
That was one set.
It was only June two was the only one that was on our agenda.
The minutes were done already.
Okay, number one, I would move this, I would move this to final with the following conditions, the Z E O, again, has a long list, so we'll just put in that. The parking is for twenty-eight spaces. Okay, they, they, the tandem parking spaces are not counted towards the twenty-eight spaces that they're providing on the site. However, the F A R and the lot coverage needs to be done now for the total site. And that will include the, the, the demising wall in these two-family units is not an exception to the F A R and has to be included in the F A R. The, the grade plane has to be revised to eliminate the three-and-a-half-story building that they created. So I don't know exactly, well, that's up to them to do it, because that would require them going to, to the zoning board of appeals if they can't correct it. But anyway, that's right now a, a non-conforming situation, the grade placement. I, I think those are the big things, that, that all of these F A R and lot coverage issues need to be done.
Right.
On the new regs, so for the whole site.
And then there's two other, there's two other issues, one is that, that they have to address the D P W list prior to coming, you know, prior to the final, they need to.
Yeah, well, that's prior, his comments are prior to the final site plan approval.
And then, they need to address the sewer, the sewer, the sewer department regard, regarding the inadequacy of the existing ground. I think that's the only thing I, that they cited. Okay, Brad?
Yes, I've seconded, Donald is talking, so you didn't hear.
Oh, A R C, A R C.
Oh, yes, A R C for the landscaping and planting and also the building, but that shouldn't be a problem, but let's get it for everything.
Okay.
Very good, guys.
Is it?
Very good.